Wow, two bobs. This one says treasurer. Two bobs. Two bobs are better than one. I wonder if this was, uh, this was leftover something.
The Plymouth Township Planning Commission will come to order at 7:00 PM and the Secretary please call roll.
Chairman Dennis Sobolski.
Here.
Commissioner Barberina.
Here.
Gail Greger, here. Treasurer Dor Shavitz.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Berry is excused. Commissioner Itzal.
Here.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight as submitted?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Your support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Boyd to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting of June 1st?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of June 1st as submitted. Support.
Move by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Greger to approve the minutes as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment, this is for any non-agenda item, something that we will not be discussing from the agenda tonight. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to a non-agenda item? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. First item under public hearing is the Meyer grocery store and gas station of special land use. So with that, the planner gives us our report.
Thank you Chairman Sobolski. Good evening Planning Commissioners. We have reviewed the special land use application for approximately 160,000 square foot Meyer facility. This is located on Five Mile between Beck Road and Ridge Road. The proposed facility includes a grocery store, a pharmacy, an attached outdoor garden center, other areas for outdoor sales and display, and then closer to Five Mile, a 3,300 square foot convenience store with a gas station. The site covers approximately 21 acres, but this is part of a larger site on the south side of Five Mile there that's owned by Redeco, and that contains additional acres that used to compromise the former DeHoco House of Corrections. The property is owned, the industrial district, where a grocery store and a convenience store and gas station are considered a special land use. I'd like to note that while the applicant has provided a detailed application, especially in regards to the facade design of the building, the only request before you this evening is for the special land use. This is not to be confused with the site plan. If the special land use were approved this evening, then the applicant would move forward and submit for that site plan. However, it's still a good opportunity tonight for the commission to provide some feedback to the applicant on the facade design. So on page two of our report, it outlines the six standards that the planning commission is charged with applying to a special land use in the township. And we start off with criteria number one, and that is, the use is of such location, size, and character that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is situated, and will not be detrimental to the orderly development of adjacent districts or uses. And there's a couple different considerations that are given for this criteria. The first is that the intensity and scale of the use, the proposed Meyer facility, needs to be appropriate in comparison to the surrounding area and uses. So there's a table there on page two that details the surrounding zoning districts to the east, southwest, and north. It details the planned land use of those areas, which is all light industrial, except for to the north in Northville Township, which their master plan is currently under review. And then it also details the current land uses surrounding the property, which are either vacant or planned for commercial industrial, and to the north in Northville Township, some residential and recreational, but also some commercial and industrial further down on Five Mile. So, as you can see from this table, the majority of the surrounding area is surrounded by other industrial uses, particularly in Plymouth Township, as well as other large big box stores, retailers, and restaurant chains. This would include the Home Depot and other restaurants in that area. So in terms of the intensity and scale, we find that it is appropriate. On page three, another consideration for criteria is the consistency with the township's adopted master plan. And as you can see from the image on the screen, this entire area is projected to be light industrial from the 2015 master plan. However, one of the goals of the master plan is to strengthen the tax base and provide jobs, which clearly a large retail facility would do. It's important to note that as you move further to the east from the subject site, so at the intersection of Beck and Five Mile Road, that there are similar developments that occupy industrial uses, industrial zone property and property that is planned for industrial in the future. So the map shows there the approximate location of Home Depot, Bank of America, the Future Hotel on Beck Road, the Buddy's Pizza, Starbucks, et cetera. Those are all planned for industrial areas. On the future land use map, there's precedent that would allow commercial in these areas. Also on page three, another consideration is the impact of the use on natural features of the site. As was earlier noted, this is the former Detroit House of Corrections facility, and while there is some vegetation on the site, remediation is necessary, and any development on the site would result in the loss of vegetation and require the cleanup of that area. So while those are challenges to the property, it's not unique to the proposed use of the Meyer facility, as any development would require those. Page four details criteria number two, which is that the use must be designed, located, and operated so that the public health.
Consideration one D.
Oh, that, um, that has to do with can, uh, can the industrial district accommodate the commercial use? And it could be beneficial to the area to support the existing.
Sorry to interrupt. You're on criteria two?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so criteria two is that it can't be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. We note that the details on onsite security have not been provided at this time. However, the applicant does note that the use would provide well at parking areas and anti-theft protection measures. The applicant is here this evening to describe in more detail onsite security preventative measures. The development would result in the cleanup, as I mentioned, the environmental cleanup of the Detroit House of Corrections underground and, uh, surface contamination. And then at the bottom of page four, we note that a traffic study has been reviewed by the township engineer, and they are here this evening to discuss the details of that, but that any proposed improvements to Ridge, or to Five Mile Road, excuse me, would need to be approved by not only Wayne County, but also the township engineer. There is a proposed traffic signal that they have detailed on their concept plan to accommodate traffic volumes. On page five, we list criteria number three, which is that the use will be adequately served by public services and facilities without adversely impacting those facilities to other land uses in the area. And while this project will require the extension of public sanitary, the water main, and some other public utilities, there is capacity in the system to accommodate that, and the public sidewalk along Five Mile Road would also be extended as part of this project. So there's sufficient capacity and the infrastructure can be met. We note that, of course, all final township engineering approvals would be needed. Criteria number four is that the vehicular circulation would be in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare. Access to the site is proposed from two different curb cuts off Five Mile. Both have met the fire department's standards for safety ingress. As I mentioned, a proposed traffic signal is proposed at one of those curb cuts to accommodate traffic flows. Criteria number five is that the location used and assembly of persons in connection with the proposed use, so that would be the customers, the shoppers of the facility and the workers there, would not be hazardous to the area. And as a retail use, we don't find any concern with that. Lastly, criteria number six is that the proposed site layout is in compliance with the general site development standards, which would be the site plan standards. And, this is a special land use application, so site plan review has not been performed at this time. However, the property is large enough to accommodate this scale development and still meet all the dimensional and landscaping and parking standards of the zoning ordinance. So we don't see an issue with those being met in the future. The only area that we've noted that the applicant may be asking for any deviations to the code is the sign ordinance, but that would have to go before the zoning board of appeals for any specific signage. So we do feel that criteria number six can be met as the project goes through the site plan review process. So on page six is our recommendation, which is that pending any additional information presented during the public hearing tonight, that the planning commission grant special land use approval for the Meyer grocery store and convenience store gas station contingent on approval of a site plan that addresses all planning, fire, and engineering requirements, and contingent that the traffic study and associated roadway improvements are found acceptable to the township engineer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we turn to the engineer report. Pardon? Yep, we're still working through the reports.
Yeah, thank you. I'll address that. So while the plan is at special land use stage, it hasn't officially been submitted to our office for site plan review as of yet. We have had a chance to look at the traffic study that was generated, and we issued a one-page memo, which I will read now, and will be prepared to answer questions as they come up later. Proposed Meyer is currently under development in Plymouth Township. The development will be located south side of Five Mile, west of Beck. The property will consist of the main store, as well as a gas station and a convenience store. One parcel has the potential for an outlot development. However, there is no current plan for this. Access to the site will be provided by two proposed driveways that connect to Five Mile Road.
Speak up, please.
Pardon?
Speak up.
Sure, sure. Can you hear me now? Is this microphone on? Okay. Purpose of, uh, the Meyer is planned for construction in 2025. As part of the township site plan review process, a traffic impact study was performed to determine the long-term impacts of the proposed Meyer will have on the existing road network. The purpose of this memo was to summarize the review of this traffic study. Existing traffic data was collected at the intersections of Filemough Road and Ridge Road, Beck Road, and Johnson Creek Drive. This data was analyzed for current conditions, as well as the 17-year horizon, to provide a baseline to compare the proposed development impact to. Trips were estimated using the ITE Trip Generation 11th Edition to determine the estimated traffic generated by the proposed Meyer. ITE land uses were used that correlate with each portion of the development. For the main 159,000 square foot Meyer store, the freestanding discount superstore land use ITE Code 813 was used. For the 12-pump gas station and convenience store, the gas station convenience market land use Code 945 was used. Trips to be sections were determined based on existing traffic volumes. Location related to population density, internal capture being the two proposed land uses, pass-by rates published by the Trip Generation Book 3rd Edition, and diverted length vehicle trips. The trip generation for the proposed development were modeled for the 2025 build-out year, as well as the 2040 17-year horizon year, including with the analysis of the 2040 build-out years, the potential construction of the MITC, as well as the development of the Meyer Outlot. The outlot development was assumed to be 3,000 square foot fast food establishment for trip generation purposes. Results from the initial trip generation analysis determined that several turn movements at the intersections of Filemough Road and Ridge Road, Beck Road, Johnson Creek Drive operated at failing levels of service. As a result, all suggested improvements were modeled to determine the feasibility of reducing vehicle delays over the long term. For the intersections of Five Mile and Ridge Road and Johnson Creek Drive, the information that has been provided with the traffic study determines, demonstrates, with reasonable assumptions and analysis, the impact on traffic from the proposed Meyer will have minimal negative impact at the time of construction. However, the study also shows that in conjunction with MITC and the background growth of traffic over the next 17 years, there will be significant increases in delay and queue lengths at the intersections.
Please stop talking, sir.
Intersections of Five Mile Road, Ridge Road.
Just one moment. The questions will come up during public hearing. You can address those to the chair, okay? All right.
Don't interrupt.
All right. Please, don't interrupt while we go through these studies, okay? You'll have a chance.
We don't have it on the turn. Please, please stop. Please stop.
Sir, we're gonna stop this right now.
Just hang on a second, Dennis.
Well.
Where's it at? All right.
Just give us a chance to.
Just please stop, sir. I'll find it.
Can you give us a moment to correct whatever is the problem?
But please don't interrupt people when they're talking. There you go. It was just posted about an hour ago. It's fresh off the, off the, off the press. Okay, go ahead.
I'm on the second page, the second from last paragraph. Okay. "It can be concluded that these negative impacts can be mitigated to reasonable levels with the appropriate road and traffic signal improvements over the long term." "One of the proposed modifications for both the build-out and no-build conditions includes the construction of an additional through lane for eastbound and westbound traffic on Five Mile Road from Johnson Creek Drive and Pilot Drive. The addition of the two through lanes to improve the capacity at the intersection of Five Mile and Beck Road. However, this is relatively large-scale modification with potential conflicts to implementation. As a result, the 17-year horizon should be analyzed with all other suggested modifications, excluding the additional through lanes on Five Mile Road. The levels of service that result from removing suggested through lanes should be provided in the traffic study." To summarize that, we're, we're at the first step of the initial submittal of the traffic study, and we anticipate requesting some traffic mitigation measures, and that we will have the site plan stage and construction plan stage to, to go through those requested modifications. And the plan has yet to be submitted to our office for official site plan review. So we've got several stopping points along the way as this progresses through the process.
Question on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the traffic study from the Trip Generation Handbook, what does that comprehend? Does that comprehend a facility like this that would have a pretty regular flow of truck traffic delivering merchandise? How does it, how does it know that?
Okay, we brought our subject matter expert that did the traffic memo with us today.
Sir?
No, it's a great question. So the ITE Trip Generation, that's a database that is compiled by numerous traffic studies that look at all sorts of different land uses. And this site, you know, the Meyer grocery store is, falls under one land use, and the gas station with the convenience store falls under another land use, based on mountains of data that's able to spit out numbers of what the expected trip generations would be for those sites.
But with the trip generation, if I understood you right, it's, it's anticipating, a lot of times when you talk about traffic, you talk about, you think about, you know, customers and employees in and out, but does the model understand that there are lots of visitors to this site, including, including trucks that are delivering merchandise? I mean, I think that's the question I asked. I'm not sure if I heard, got the answer.
So since these are based on other studies that have done, those studies would have included the various kinds of traffic generated.
So the answer is yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could just add as well, when these studies are done, they look at suburban and urban models, and the models that are used in this instance are the suburban, which reflects like more trip generation. People aren't using transit to go to the store.
Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
If you could go to the top of page two. This sentence says, "Results from the initial trip generation determine that several movements at the intersections operated at failing levels of service." Is that today's condition, or is that some condition in the future?
That's looking at future conditions, and that's looking at the no-build and the build situation. So just from the general future growth of traffic, some turning movement, some motions out there will have failing levels of service. And that's assuming that nothing changes out there, that, that although the road geometry stays the same. So in addition to that, that's included in the traffic study, the engineers have included several suggestions to help improve the capacity of Five Mile Road, and they modeled those suggestions. And through those models, they have been able to mitigate those projected failing levels of service.
Can you tell us what those changes would be?
Absolutely.
Unless, I'm sorry, am I getting ahead of myself?
No, well, but that's okay. This is important.
Two of the major changes would be the proposed traffic signal that would be located at the eastern Meyer driveway aligned with Johnson Creek Drive. There would also be a traffic signal at Five Mile Road and Ridge Road. In addition to that traffic signal, there would also be a right turn and left turn lanes added to each of the approaches at that intersection. They suggest acceleration and deceleration for the western Meyer driveway. The, the, the final paragraph in that we discussed, they have a suggestion for adding the eastbound and a westbound through lane from Johnson Creek Drive east to Pilot Drive that would go through Beck Road. We believe there are several complications to reasonably expect that that improvement could be made. So that is why we're suggesting in the report that we would like to see analyses done with all the other suggestions made, excluding that suggestion, to see what then would result be out there.
Thank you.
Does, does the traffic study take into consideration current loads, unique situations, maybe like the trucks going to the dump?
The traffic study does not include that. It, it does, um, they collect data with the existing conditions. So whatever existing traffic is out there right now, that would be considered in the report.
But that is the existing traffic that's out there.
So then yes.
So then it would. So the answer is they have considered the uniqueness to it?
Yes. With existing data.
I didn't hear what you said, John. The answer, you first said that it didn't, but now you're saying it does.
Well, they didn't specifically discuss the, that truck data. Like, for example, they specifically discussed the proposed MITC improvements and how those would impact. They didn't specifically discuss that, but due to the nature of collecting existing traffic data out there, that existing truck traffic would be captured.
So they're out there counting the cars, basically?
Yes.
Do they distinguish the type of vehicle that it is? Or are they able to do that?
They are able to do that, yes.
They are? Okay.
They can do that with the, the line that runs, the tube that runs across the street?
There, yeah, there's, there's a way of distinguishing between regular passenger vehicles and articulated trucks, or full trucks, multi-axle trucks.
Okay, any other questions on just the traffic study?
If I could just, sorry. If I, if I could just make sure that I understand what the report says, what it says is that there would be significant impact without a number of road improvements. Is that a, is that a first statement?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's it, Bob. Okay. All right, and we have a report from the fire department. They have no objections from a public safety perspective. So with that, we have the applicant here. Okay, and do you have a presentation or? I have a question. I, I can start it off if you wish, just to kind of expand on the traffic. That seems to be a big issue. When Home Depot was first developed at its current site, the Planning Commission was concerned about traffic and what impact, you know, the impact on that, what would happen to the other Home Depots like the one that's currently at Seven and Hagerty. We're kind of comparing the two. If it's not proprietary information, but does such a data book exist from Myers that they would be willing to share as to how many trips are generated from the Meyer store that is close to this particular site, Canton and Northville?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
My name is Chris Jones. I'm senior real estate manager.
I don't think it's on. Red is on.
How about now? Can everybody hear me now? Is that better? Okay. Thank you. My name is Chris Jones. I'm senior real estate manager for Meyer, and I think the question was to contrast perhaps our closest store, which is on Hagerty Road, and, and I-96, I believe it's 96 there. That store is very.
It's 27, it's near 27, it's near 275 and Hagerty and then the Cantons.
That store is very different. That store is number 54 in our chain of stores. It was built in, to. It was built in July of 1985, so it's 38 years old. The store is 240,000 square feet and has 854 parking spaces. This store that we're proposing here is significantly smaller. It had 160,000 square feet and significantly fewer parking spaces. And obviously it would be built in 2025, which is still a couple of years from now. The Meyer studies is, as, as we do our own parking studies and we do our own traffic studies, obviously we have over 120 stores in the state of Michigan. So this is a, you know, an item that is talked about in most every new project. We look at our stores as generating, things have changed recently in the last couple of years, I should say, because we used to operate 100% of our stores 24 hours. We no longer do that since the pandemic. There's also been some, you know, very different, different, different ways people shop since the pandemic. And as they, we have a lot of deliveries made to people into their homes or people shopping. We have curbside pickup available at this location. But to answer your specific question, we generate, I think the traffic manual in Meyer numbers agree that we generate about 3,500 trips per day.
Of comparable sized stores. Sir?
Thirty-five hundred.
Let me lay down some ground rules before we start this discussion. First of all, we always ask everyone here to be clear, concise, and cogent, most importantly to be civil. So I'll let you know right up front, we do not want applause, we do not want booing. We want everyone to feel comfortable to come forward. It's a very difficult task for many people to come before a group like ours and speak their mind. And we're interested in hearing what they have to say. Now, if they're in opposition or if they're in, in support, we want to hear both sides. And when we have these outbursts of applause and booing, that really prevents us from getting a clear message from the public. So I ask you to do that. And when I do open the public hearing, we're, we are held to a three minute timeline. After everyone has had a chance to speak, you can have another three minutes, so a total of six minutes. I'm going to stick close to the three minutes. I used to give people an extra 30 seconds, 45 seconds, but at the last meeting, some people complained about that, that they felt that some people were given preference over another. So it's going to be three minutes. I'll try to give you a 10 second warning and we expect that after three minutes, you finish your comments. But you're much more than welcome to come back for your additional three minutes. So please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Just quickly to add, there's some chairs in this first room on the left down the hall here. I hate to see you all standing for so long. If you want to go grab some chairs, some of the guys, if you would do that, that would be, that'd be great. We can fit you in here. I hate to see everybody standing for so long.
They're, they're welcome to take my seat as well up front. Again, I'm here tonight to answer any specific questions you have of Meyer and any very specific questions related to the special land use. I think the, the planning director did a very good job of presenting our materials and tonight is about special land use. And I hope the, the, the public understands that we're happy to listen to all of their comments as well. And we're, we have another step to come back and talk about very specific items like landscaping and lighting and, you know, hours of operation, whatever they'd like to talk about that's more appropriate for site plan review. But I'm, I'm, again, I'm here to stay as long as, as needed and answer any additional questions.
Okay, well, we will open the, when we open the public hearing, hearing the comments from the people, we jot down, you know, what the issues are and we'll call upon you to answer that to the best of your ability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the team there?
Just want to make sure this is working before I talk. Is it working? Not, not working.
It's on.
Okay, good.
Do you see a red light?
No, it's a green light.
Green.
That's even better.
Okay, well, good evening and thank you very much for, for having us here. My name is Andrew Dunlap. I'm a senior vice president with Redico. Redico is the owner and developer of the broader project here, which we call VTEC. It's a little over 60 acres. Redico is a privately owned development and investment firm here headquartered in southeastern Michigan. We have over 50 years of experience of developing projects such as this in Michigan and around the Midwest. This will be our fourth Meyer development, our third in Michigan. We, we Redico have found them to be tremendous to work with and we've left every community that we've done a Meyer in, in a better place. So we're tremendously excited to continue our experience here in Plymouth and Northville. This will be our third project at the Five Mile and Beck corridor. We, we think it's, we know it's been a tremendous success and we have, we're very excited about the future of this area. This is a, an important project. It's a mixed use project and we're very excited to have Meyer be a part of our broader mixed use project. But we've got another 40 acres for continued development that will be keeping with the, what the planner described and with MITC. So thank you very much. And with that, I've got Meyer representatives here to answer all your questions.
Okay.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Tommy Ammon. I just want to introduce myself since I'm standing up here. I am legal counsel for Meyer. Happy to address any questions in the special land use context, but otherwise I'm happy to answer any questions following public comment as well. But I just want to introduce myself.
Thank you. You're all done up there? Okay. So we will, with that, we will open the public hearing at 7:36. I laid out the ground rules, the three minutes and show respect, be civil to one another. So you can just align up or step up when the podium becomes free there and we'll jot down your thoughts.
Let's put this on the record. My name is Hassan. You and I are public activists. I'm here for the people. Just to let you guys know, I served you with a field of information regarding any emails that you and Myers had or anybody in the city that had any emails or if it's a conflict of interest for you guys to approve this today. And just to let everybody know, the traffic study today, AMDA is supposed to do the traffic study. Who's Myers to come in here to do a traffic study and say, hey, this is how much people we have? This has to be a traffic study from AMDA. And I will be foiling the AMDA study from Myers. If there's no AMDA study, that means you're just, they just want to walk in here and say, hey, where are Myers? We got 10 lawyers over here or four lawyers or this and that and the other. Chair, suspend the rules, take a road call. Let me talk to this guy over here.
Okay.
Suspend the rules. Take a road call and let me talk to the individual right here.
That's not the purpose right now.
I'm asking you to suspend the rules. Somebody get a motion, put a motion on the floor, suspend the rules and take road call. You know what that is?
Do what?
To do what?
I want to talk to the gentleman over here.
Well, you can.
I want to talk to him directly.
No, you address everything through the chair from the.
I'm addressing the chair. I said suspend the rules and take road call. You know what that means? You're wasting my minutes. I'm asking you to suspend the rules and take road call. You know what the Robert Rules of Order is?
So you want us?
Do you know what the Robert Rules of Order is? I'm asking you to suspend the rules and take road call. So I can talk to the gentleman over here.
You can talk to him right now?
So I can talk to him without suspending the rules?
You can ask.
I can ask him, he's going to answer me, right? That's why I want to suspend the rules. I want him to answer me. I don't want him to, listen, we're not here to be mute. We're here to get answers. I'm asking you to suspend the rules. I'm asking because it's the Robert Rules of Order, to suspend the rules and take road call.
This is comments.
I understand, but you're sitting there trying to rub it off and telling me this is comments? I want an answer from him. Did he get a study from AMDA? Yes or no? That's my answer. That's my question. Yes or no? Either yes or no.
You need to stop shouting.
It's not shouting, I got three minutes, man. You can't tell me what to say. I'm talking to people.
Number one, this is not how you file a FOIA. If you're such an expert activist, you would know how to file a FOIA. This is not how you do it.
Well, yes it is. Provided by Section 52. Don't sit there and, and tell me what to do, sir. Please. You don't know me and I don't know you. This is a FOIA request. I handed it to you and I served it to you today and I put it on the record. That's what it is.
File a FOIA.
Yeah, okay. I don't know how to file a FOIA. I can email the clerk. Doesn't matter. I gave it to you.
You have 10.
Why are you sitting there talking to me like this?
You have 10 seconds or three minutes will be up.
See, you guys, you guys are here for your own personal agenda. You want, you're not even going to listen to the public. You can't suspend the rules. Oh, sorry, you can't answer that. It's public court. I can't even look at your phone. Your phone has to be muted. Did you know that? This is, this is a public court call, public hearing.
It's a timer.
It's a timer. It's not a phone. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, so I am the HOA president of the Village at Northville, which is the subdivision that is at the corner of Five and Beck Road. We were under the impression when we bought these homes that there was going to be a MyTech development that was supposed to be research, office research, tech area, business park, stuff like that. Now all of a sudden, you're telling us you're putting in a horse track race, storage centers, gas stations, big box stores. My problem with this is that you people don't live there. Most of you don't. Most of my neighbors that are here, raise your hand. Village of Northville, raise your hand. This is who this development affects. We have traffic at the corner of Beck and Five. We have dump trucks going past constantly our neighborhood. We have, now you're going to have, Meyer comes in, you're going to have supply trucks coming down. Right now, that corner is so over trafficked with traffic, just normal nine to five traffic. At the corner of Bradner, I'm sorry, Bradford and Five Mile, across from Home Depot, just to get out of our neighborhood in that morning, it takes us 10 minutes to turn right or left out of that division, out of that subdivision. And what happens is the corner of Five and Beck, when you get backed up on Beck Road, when it gets backed up, like right now, there's construction or if you have a hockey arena or a soccer tournament over there at the parks, people cut through our neighborhood to come to Five Mile to go right or left. It is already a problem and this is without a racetrack. It is without a Meyer. It is without anything else. The normal flow of traffic there, this two lane road, one way, is not sufficient to have this type of store in that neighborhood. We don't want it. We don't need it. It is not acceptable and this is not what we were promised. The township commission of Northville denied the Meyer at our corner for this particular reason and now because the free for all of Plymouth Township is just going to go ahead and stick it on their side. We don't want it. Northville denied it. And Northville Township, I talked to them and they said that they denied it and you guys aren't sticking to the ordinances of the agreement from Wayne County, that Wayne County gave you an investment to help the infrastructure at that corner for this MyTech, specific MyTech project. And now it seems like Plymouth Township is disgarding the ordinances of, that they agreed to with this, with this agreement with Wayne County and you're just doing a free for all now. And Northville Township is not doing that. They're sticking to what they agreed to and we are not happy. We live there. This affects us. I don't give one hoot about a traffic this or that. I live there. I have to pull out. Takes me 15 minutes to turn right or left on Five Mile. Takes me 10 minutes to pull out on Beck Road, right or left. You keep adding stuff there.
Less than 10 seconds.
Thank you. You keep adding stuff there. We live there. It affects us, people, people.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, did, did you, I didn't catch.
You live in Northville?
I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
I didn't catch the opening.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I didn't catch the opening. Are you from Northville or from Plymouth?
I live in Northville Township and the Village of Northville, which is the corner of Beck and Five Mile, across from the Home Depot. You guys are building this right across the street from my neighborhood. When I bought my lot.
You answered her's question. I have to stay within the time limit.
Well, about that, my name is Joe Schwirp. I'm an attorney. I represent the Shell gas station owner who's here today. He's one of two businesses along with Bush's that is particularly impacted by this project. And because of that, I would ask the commission for more time to speak, please.
Our policy has been three minutes for years.
I can't possibly, and he's one of two people who can sue you guys for, for this passing it. So I think it's incumbent upon you to listen to everything I've got to say because otherwise you don't know what you're, you're not getting the information you need.
How many minutes do you need?
I would like 10 minutes.
Well, we'll consider it once we hear from everyone else. Thank you. Or you have your three minutes now if you want to use a part of your time.
I hope I'm not on the clock yet.
Pardon?
I hope I wasn't on the clock yet.
Not, not so far.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
But now you are.
Thank you.
Okay.
So this is zoned industrial. You look at the industrial ordinance, it says wholesale, manufacturer, tool and die. And again, what's MyTech stand for? Is it manufacturing or machine? Manufacturing, industry, technology. This ain't that. All the use is industrial. We know what industrial is. Manufacturing, manufacturing, research and testing and so forth. So you get the special, special land use within that section. And it talks about childcare, large indoor, outdoor recreational areas, railroads, commercial TV and radio towers, metal plating facilities, outside storage, salvage yards, municipal facilities, so forth. And then of course, there is the section 15, I need to grab it. Section 15 of the ordinance that has a little bit of a catch up. It says, "Any other research, office, testing, manufacturer, wholesale service or commercial service, then the determination of planning commission will be consistent with the purposes of this article." So that means consistent with all these manufacturing, research, MyTech uses. This is not that. This is pure and simple retail. It's completely inconsistent with the purpose of the ordinance. And it talks about the standard under 19.215, it says it's got to be consistent with the purposes of Article 19. The purposes of Article 19 are to provide districts for industrial or scientific research, wholesale and service uses. This isn't wholesale and this isn't service. I'm a service. Laundry mat might be a service. Retail, grocery, clothing is not a service. And for the treatment of finished or semi-finished products from previously prepared materials. Before my three minutes is up, I want to get into the traffic study. When they proposed it for Northville, this was the traffic study, 50 pages. If the Meyer were built half a mile east of Northville Township, this traffic study says you would need two left turn lanes going southbound on Beck and you would need two left turn lanes at, going northbound on Beck at Five Mile. Our own two page traffic study talks about failing levels of service. And when he says the future, you got to nail it down right now. I think that means when the Meyer is built in 2025, okay? You go through these, each of these paragraphs, it was up on the screen a little bit, and it says operated at failing levels of service. Will be significant increases in delay at Q length of the intersection.
At 10 seconds.
And Johnson Creek, Johnson Creek Drives, driving. Include construction of an additional through lane for eastbound and westbound traffic at Five Mile from Johnson Creek and Pilot. An additional through lanes. It goes on and on and on.
Thank you.
I can't just have another 30 seconds now.
I, I can't do that because I got into trouble at the last meeting.
Give me some time at the end.
I, I definitely will. Absolutely. I, I will. Now, didn't you hear me say something about applause and booing? We don't want that. That, that's not constructive to what we're about here. Please don't do that. We're respecting you and so please respect us and our rules. We're trying to be fair.
Sorry, Dennis.
No, it's okay.
I didn't mean to. Problem is when you do that, you hurt your own case. Because if somebody's sitting up here and, and they're considering what you have to say and you start getting interrupting and disruptive and everything, you hurt your own argument. You shoot yourself in the foot. You shoot yourself in the foot. You know, if you wanna be heard, be polite, be gentle, don't scream at us.
I think I disagree with that a little bit because if you wanna know how we feel and what we think, then sometimes applause is showing that. So, but anyway, aside from that, I have a couple of questions.
Can you state your name, please?
I'm Dr. Mary Clark and I live in Plymouth Township.
Sorry?
I'm Dr. Mary Clark, I live in Plymouth Township.
Thank you.
We have a Meyer on Ford Road. We have a Meyer on Eight Mile Road. We really don't need another Meyer on Five Mile Road. On Eight Mile Road, it's a five-lane road. Two on each side, turns, turn lane in the middle. Down on Ford Road, it's a five-lane road to get in and out. Five Mile Road is a two-lane road, right now. If in fact, we have to build additional lanes and lights and all of that sort of thing, I wanna know who's gonna pay for that? Does Meyer plan on making Five Mile into a five-lane access road? I just need to know that. I wanna know how much of this additional stuff that, is Meyer gonna pay for that, or are we gonna have to pay for that?
Thank you. Next.
My name is Steve Karub, I live about a mile from this project on Plymouth Township. I don't know if I'm for or against it, I really don't. I don't know if I'm for or against the racetrack, but I used to work there. I do know that a lot of arguments that are coming up, people aren't paying attention to this fact. And I don't mean to be rude to anybody, but when you say that you live across from Home Depot, whoever said it, I apologize. That was already there when you moved in. A lot of these things that you're complaining about were already there when you moved in, and you're complaining about them. People complained about the racetrack for fifty years, and they bought houses across the street complaining about it. And I just want you to keep in mind, whether you're for or against this, be honest about what's happening. It's going to increase traffic, absolutely. We, I kind of love the idea of it being closer, instead of driving to Eight Mile. I don't want that traffic area, it's huge. Look where it's at. There's poles, there's the hotels, there's admission market, there's a lot of stuff over it, you know, I'm having. There's not here, the racetrack isn't gonna affect the traffic like you think it is. It's hardly any better. There will continue to be very little. When you complain about somebody building on private property and saying that it was for some other land use, that's why we're here today, to see, maybe I'm wrong, if you're correct. If it should be changed or not. Saying that you're going against what's currently happening doesn't make sense. It's about change. And again, I don't know if I'm for or against it. But I do know, I'll be honest about the whole thing. When I say Five Mile's already been improved, when somebody said about the racetrack that it wasn't. Ridg Road was being improved, when they said it wasn't. So, when you come up and make your comments, if you want my opinion, and I say it to other people, whether or not this happens, at least I'm gonna tell them. Well, that's gonna work, or that's not gonna work. You're gonna do the land study, the traffic study, because you have to do it. Home Depot, the Michigan Department of Transportation is going to get involved. It's going to be widened, there's going to be lights there. And when you say you're representing somebody, say who you're representing. Don't say the name of the group, say who these people are. And I apologize, I have the slightest idea if you're representing me or not. I don't know you. When you say you've done a traffic study over there, I haven't seen any tubes on the road that count cars, not one. And I go through there every single day. So, comparing Eight Mile and Hagerty to Five Mile and Ridge is not apples to apples. Same thing with Ford Road, it's not the same. They're not talking about building a ton of different businesses that are gonna be brought over there. The future will change, things are gonna grow, we're gonna lose some of these lands across the street on the Northville side. They're looking to build something.
You have ten seconds.
And whatever happens, keep in mind what's actually happened. Please don't add things that aren't there. You knew when you moved there what the traffic was.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Dean Rovinelli, I'm a resident of Northville Township in that subdivision right across from there, so I'm speaking out of my mind here as well. Personally, I'm against it, and I was just curious, this is more of a question that I'd like to pose. With the Michigan International Technology Center, that whole group that was created in two thousand nine, which is what it says on the website, in participation with Plymouth Township, Northville Township in the state of Michigan, and maybe one other entity, if I'm not mistaken. The, the whole concept behind this was to create this industrial, tech jobs, and whatnot. And if, if you click on the link on the website, when it talks about Northville Township, it's got a picture of our, our park and our subdivision in there as a way to promote the lifestyle. If you were to work in this, in this industrial development, you know, look at the homes around, and look at the parks and everything, and and there's a link there, and you click on it, and it goes to the SEMCOG stats. And I was just curious as to the, the backpedaling, as far as the development. Like, this group was organized in two thousand nine for this purpose, to, to generate, you know, higher-paying jobs. The lower-end average salary of a tech person, or, or somebody that would work in this type of industrial park, according to the stats here, around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, up to one forty, one fifty, for those types of jobs, right? What has happened in this corridor? This, this group was designed for this corridor to develop it. What is, what has caused a little bit of the backpedaling to go away from those types of businesses that create those types of jobs to all of a sudden horse track, grocery store? I'm personally against it, but I, I can't stop everything from happening. Things just happen, as the gentleman said, the future keeps on moving, but I don't have to agree with it, I don't have to light more traffic. I don't. But I'm here to speak my mind. And my, my question once again, lastly, is why has this evolved in a different direction from what the statements are of what, you know, this, this entity was created for? So, I'd like to, I'd like to hear more about that.
We will, we'll, I'll ask that question. There's representatives here, I think they can help us with that.
Oh, really, lastly. I clicked on that link, and it brings you to SEMCOG. And you know, you, you look at the numbers as far as jobs right over the next, whatever, few decades in two thousand fifty. Retail trade minus twenty-nine, twenty-eight percent. The jobs that would be created through mid, what do you call? Michigan International Technology Center. SEMCOG stats say thirty-six point one percent more jobs in that sector. So we're going in a direction where the stats that you guys are providing say, you know, are gonna be struggling, and we're, we're gonna let go of probably a lot of high-paying salary jobs that it was designed for.
Could, could I ask you just to repeat that? I didn't quite follow that.
So, okay, I'm sorry. So if you click on the link on the, the Michigan International Technology Center, there's a link that says, "Get detailed demographics." And I just clicked on it, and it takes you to the SEMCOG website. And on the SEMCOG website, you go down to forecasted jobs by industry sector. Well, the sector that, that, that Michigan International Technology Center was designed to create along this, this stretch of road, well, the stats show on that site that they're projecting almost forty percent more job creation in those sectors, and the retail is minus twenty-eight percent. I don't know, the numbers can mean a lot to different people, but I just thought that that was curious, that the stats showed those things.
All right, thank you so much. Next person? Yeah?
Should I turn on my stopwatch, or you will tell me?
No, no.
Okay, my name is Arshad Khwaja. And back in ninety-seven, when I moved to Country Club Village, we already had a new house, um, two years living. It was a little bit down from Ford Road and Canton Centre, I was living in Canton. And it used to take me a long time from two seventy-five exit by Ford Road, and it was so much traffic congestion. We decided to move to Plymouth, thinking peace and tranquility. And I'm talking really very holistically of the city because within a year from Detroit News, the cover story for our sub division and comparing about two or three zip codes of Wayne County with about five or seven zip codes of Oakland, premier counties. So we were very happy that this, and really, when I saw a lot of traffic developing, Beck Road and Five Mile, that was definitely not very much likeable. But somehow, right now, this city had its own image comparing to Bloomfield Hills and many other. I remember, I still have that newspaper that issue saved in my basement, I can provide you a copy if you want to see that. So, it was, uh, they were comparing in Wayne County, Rose Point, Plymouth, Northville, with the Bloomfield Hills, West Bloomfield, and many. I don't remember exact zip codes. So, my point is that since nineteen ninety-seven, when I come back from two seventy-five, there's no traffic backup on my Beck Road exits. And I'm telling you, there'll be big, big, you know, backup on those exits, and this is not the city I'm moving. So this is, this is my point in terms of, uh, so I'm, I'm living in Norbert and Ridge. But I'm not looking at specifics for mine, but overall view of the city and the way premier cities, they, they don't do that much in commercialization the way people talk about, I'm not going in microdetail. So that's only my opinion, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming on.
So, I'm Hongzhang from Northville, and I also live in a subdivision of.
Can you try to, just to speak a little closer?
Yeah, I'm Hongzhang, and I'm from Northville, and I also live in the subdivision at Five Mile and Beck. So, there are a few points I wanna make here for your consideration. So first of all, I'm the mother of a four-and-a-half-year-old boy. And I know many of my neighbors have kids there because we all moved there a few years ago for the school district, and it's a quiet community there. And right now, because of the traffic, Five Mile and also Beck Road, we've seen a lot of cuts through, through the neighborhood. Which, you know, not only accident is a concern, but also, you know, strangers coming into the neighborhood for the kids, kids are always playing outside, that makes me feel it's a little dangerous. And with more traffic coming in the place, I, my concern would just grow for the kids. So that's my first point for your consideration. And also, for today's weather, I'm not sure how many people saw it, also level in Northville area, Plymouth area has been has been alerting, in the alerting range, which, you know, is related to pollution. And that was my thing, why do we need another gas station here? We already got one at Five Mile and Beck. We have one there, so I don't see the need, or if it really brings the convenience for us to have a gas station over there with a convenience store. And then the third thing is, I, same as many of the others who have already spoke, I have concerns regarding the traffic study. When I was reading it online, it's only two pages, there is no transparent information in it about what they did, what they studied. And then they just present the idea that there are, there will be concerns, of course, because you bring a Meyer in place, more traffic for sure, it will be mitigated in the future, we believe, blah, blah, blah. And that, that didn't give me any confidence that if they bring it in, anyone in the end would address the question, who will, who will widen the road, and what causes that? Who's going to pay for that, and all that stuff? And considering the current condition, I'm not sure if they have bring, bring these two points into their studies that right now, Ridge Road is also a two-lane road, and part of it is unpaved, so very few traffic goes there. And I assume most of the traffic would still come from the Beck Road side, which is already super busy. And a couple of weeks ago, we had the road construction where, where we had one of the lanes closed. And that causes almost all the traffic jam, like from the morning to, you know, especially in the afternoons, after office hours. So that caused a lot of issues over there. It's, it's already super busy, I wanna mention. So, yeah, if you, if you are moving forward, you're considering bringing it in, the traffic study needs to be redone. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening, I'm Tom Wilson, Plymouth Township resident. My wife and I have been living in the township for a great number of years, love the place. I'm gonna echo a couple of concerns that have already been raised, and then introduce a couple of questions. I don't know if you can answer them, or they'll be answered later. First and foremost, I agree with the traffic study. My experience, my career, has been a lot in data analytics and modeling. I need to see more to even begin to believe what I've heard tonight. Anybody, I'm sure you have all gone up Beck Road from the expressway from M fourteen up to Five Mile, and I'm sure you realize it's a disaster. And it has been a disaster, and the addition of thirty-five hundred additional trips, and I don't know if the trip is one-way or, or both ways, but it sounds like it's possibly, you know, counted twice. I don't know how you're gonna do that without major reconstruction. And again, it's been mentioned here before, who's gonna pay for that? Okay? The next question I have, I think it's for, for you guys, is what's the township's investment in this? Is the township expected to spend any money to support Meyer coming in? And if so, where did that money come from? Is it being budgeted, and if so, why has it not been brought up sooner? I get it, I'm getting a negative. But I'd still like to know what's the township investment in this, short-term, long-term, especially if township is investing, what's gonna be the return on investment over what particular time period? So, but again, in closing, first and foremost, I am against this, I don't see the value. Again, we have a Meyers up at Eight Mile, we have a Meyer down at Ford Road. I'm concerned about the impact on the local businesses like Fresh Time, Bush's, Kroger, and especially the picnic basket. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Diane Prey, and I came this evening because some power or another, I got a text message that said that there was a meeting tonight about Meyer. And part of the text message said there's abatement that has to be done on this property to clean it up. I don't know if that's true or not. It hasn't been brought up, but that, that was gonna be coming out of my taxpayer dollars. So, just, just an open question. I am all about being a good neighbor. I want my neighbors to be kind to me, I want, you know, myself to be kind to a neighbor. It sounds like there, from, again, just listening to people tonight, that there's been some sort of agreement or conversations in the past between Plymouth Township and Northville Township about what was gonna be happening with this property. And it also sounds like Northville Township has done quite a bit of study, i.e. a fifty-page report that was, you know, brought to, to bear for the study. If Northville Township, for the same intersection, has determined that this was going to not be in their best interest, I don't know how it's in Plymouth Township's best interest, and are we being good neighbors for that? Plus, I remember historically, we used to live in Lake Point subdivision, we still are township residents. Meyer wanted to move in and buy the land that Wabasco is now built on. And one of the reasons, I don't know all the reasons that they decided not to purchase that property, but I knew that the traffic study had something to do too with the railroad tracks, and how that was going to be impacting people coming to and from their stores, and the, the store at the intersection of Hagerty and Wilcox School Craft, uh, School Craft. And that it was going to affect customers leaving the store with ice cream in the trunk of their car on a hot summer day, and also with their delivery trucks. I'd like to know if the traffic study also took into consideration the fact that there are railroad tracks that are also going to impact this particular location for Meyer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Eileen Coleman, I live in Plymouth Township. This is gonna be pretty short and sweet, okay? You have no right to change the character of Plymouth Township by doing all these things that you're doing without the will of the people. This isn't your town. It doesn't belong to the planning community. You need to put yourselves into the feet of the people that you're affecting, and start thinking about how your planning is going to affect their lives, how they get out of their subdivisions, how they get around their areas, what pollution is there. You can't just think about a monetary gain, and I don't even. You can't just think about a monetary gain, and I don't even know if there is a monetary gain. You have to keep with the master plan of Plymouth Township. I don't know what you guys are doing without considering the public. You're not considering the public. This is about Plymouth Township and it belongs to the people. It's not your town. Be careful about what you're doing, the decisions you make, that it reflects the will of the people.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. May I introduce myself?
Of course.
Anton Von Will. I'm a resident of Plymouth Township. I have been a resident for a couple of dozen years. Plymouth Township and Plymouth, and even Northville Township, and Northville has been a very important little pocket in this area. And I think we all know that, that's why we're here. I also wanted to point out to you something that I have, and almost all of you have a respect what you're doing and a job what you're doing. It's very important. And you have to have incredible good foresight to make business decisions and value decisions. And that's so important to you. Ladies and gentlemen, previous speakers already mentioned the traffic, the possibilities, the cost, and so on. So I'm not gonna go over because you already know that, because you already know that in M fourteen, tremendous amount of traffic coming from Ann Arbor, just to able to use the crossroad back from M fourteen to ninety-six. Already tremendous traffic, so you already know that. I'm also looking for a business value, what you, what I have to make a decision about. We have some lovely stores in that area, like medium-sized grocery store, Bush, Fresh Time. Meyer gonna take them out of business. That's gonna be bad. Because, by the way, I have a respect for Meyer. Meyer is the wealthiest family in state of Michigan. Tremendous achievement, what Meyer-
Can you achieve, can you address that? Thanks.
Tremendous achievement, what Meyer had done, and able to accomplish incredible financial success. Therefore, they have tremendous wave to put their ideas and, and projects ahead. And they sometime making bad decisions, sometime make good decisions. But unfortunately, the, the Eight Mile decision was horrible. Do you even like to shop at Meyers and Eight Mile? No, because you're hard to get in, you're hard to get out. You know? And those kinda things would happen in here. I also wanted to think about the business decision that really what's gonna happen with Bush's, Fresh Time, how they're gonna put them all out of business. Um we have something very valuable in this town, two lovely towns. Clear the town or two, and we're gonna keep it this way. And I, I salute you guys and your previous members of, of your commission. You have in the past twenty-five years made very good decision. You keep it very well around this area. Please continue them. Please, and take it over very seriously and make such a huge decision. The Northville wanted to get that, get rid of that race track a long time ago. And they finally able to do that. Don't inherit that race track. Don't get a incredibly large business like Meyer to move in, because we don't need that.
Thank you, your, your time is up. Thank you, thank you.
And you know why we do this?
Your, your time is up. Thank you. Your time is up.
What you have been doing before.
I cannot permit anything past the time. It's not fair to everyone.
Good evening, I'm Judy Garberino-Willard. I've lived in Plymouth Township for thirty-five years. Uh didn't have much money when I moved here. I was so grateful to be here. It was a wonderful community, cared about their residents. It was warm, it was friendly, it was a small-town atmosphere. That has changed dramatically in the last few years. Shame on the people that didn't continue that. There are twelve grocery stores from the Home Depot on Five Mile and Beck Road. The closest is two miles away and the farthest ten miles away. There are four Meyers from that, that location. There's one, six miles, seven miles, ten miles, and eight miles. We're gonna build another one. There are four Krogers, four miles, five miles, six miles, five miles. Do we really need another grocery store? But let's not forget, we have Bush's two miles away from that Home Depot. We have a Westborne Market, four miles. There's a Fresh Time, two miles away, and an Amazon Fresh that's gonna be built here, which will be six miles from that Home Depot. Four grocery stores. The woman who spoke about the first report, and even the gentleman for Meyers, we changed the way we shop. My neighbors are all young, everybody gets deliveries. Or we order online. Do we really need another grocery store? Do we really need another Meyers? Think about it for a minute. You guys are the ones who said it, we changed the way we shop now. The woman said jobs. This Meyers is gonna bring us jobs. Where are you gonna find the people to work there? Where have you been? I just spoke to the woman at Kroger's, Laurel. She said they can't get any money to work. I'm sorry, gentlemen, I watched you when you guys spoke. I wish you would give me your attention. You don't need to, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Um let's talk about the roads, that road report. I can make it real basic. You're gonna put in three lanes, you're gonna put a stoplight at Ridge Road and Five Mile. Again, you're distracted, I'd like your attention. North, north on Ridge Road, what do you have? Bravel. Where are they gonna go? You go, you go east or west on um Five Mile, what do you have? Bravel roads, where are they gonna go? Left on Ridge Road, forty-five miles an hour, two lanes, all the way to Ann Arbor Road, all the way to North Territorial. We're gonna increase that traffic there. Is that in the study? Is there a solution for that? What are you gonna do? Are you gonna widen it? That's people's backyards. You haven't considered anybody who lives down that Ridge Road corner. Let's talk about traffic. I can't get home in North Territorial when it's school time. They're backed up all the way. I have to sit and wait for those kids who come out of the community to pick up their kids and make me wait. And lastly, public safety. I hear so many sirens, can't, can't hire police officers. They're down twenty to twenty-five positions.
Thank you very much.
What's gonna happen in Plymouth? You're not gonna find anybody to work to keep it safe.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Julia Frey. I am a Plymouth Township resident. I have lived in Plymouth Township since, I wanna say nineteen eighty-four. As a young girl, I was raised and educated in North Chores on the west side of our state. And I was a frequent Meyer shopper, I love Meyers. I shopped at Meyers then, I shop at Meyers now. Thank you for being here. That being said, on October thirtieth, as my husband and I were raking leaves and maintaining our beautiful home on Beck Road in Plymouth Township, my husband was killed by a driver speeding seventy-some odd miles an hour. He died tragically. And as I held him in my arms and kissed him goodbye, our violent Plymouth Township police, who had gathered to render aid, said, "We cannot drive you to the hospital, Mrs. Frank, because we're short-staffed." That was this year. Whenever decisions are made in regards to Meyers, there certainly needs to be an improvement and an uptick in our police staffing, capacity, inability to respond at all times to anyone who pays taxes in Plymouth Township. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
My name is Mary Ann Adams. I've lived in Plymouth Township twenty-five years. I live in Ridgewood Hills and I am with all the people in Northville and the others that have expressed dissent in this development. I don't need to go over all the points that they brought up. Every one that they brought up, I agree with totally. Traffic insufficient, we need data. Um one thing I would like to see is um crime data from both Northville and Canton in terms of the number of runs that they make to both of the Meyer stores. We know that retail has a high propensity for theft right now, so we need to understand that. Um also, someone mentioned what it's, what is, it's going to cost the township to clean up this site. I would like to know what that dollar amount is and who's paying for cleaning up the DeHoppo site. And then um just a plea as well, the township is changing. I grew up in the city of Detroit. I wanted to move away to my dream town, and that was Plymouth. I worked really, really hard to come to this town and have the community that I always desired when I was young, growing up in the city of Detroit. And I can see it being torn up. And I feel like my dream is being shattered at this point. So that's all I have to say, because everything else, all these other people, you can understand uh the compassion for not putting this development through, because it's not the right thing for our township. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Chuck Hamilton. And I really wasn't coming today to speak, but I feel compelled to do so now because I'm the present and Meyers represents the future. Um I think of that woman's husband every single day because now I'm in a predicament on Ann Arbor Trail because of the overdevelopment that's a result of your doing. Of Ann Arbor Road and Hagerty has forced traffic now down Ann Arbor Trail. Illegally, I might add, because it's a no uh delivery truck zone, or only delivery trucks. I have semis now that go by my house at fifty-plus miles an hour. I have almost been hit in front of my house, so I re-landscape the front so that I could be further away and not have to mow my lawn down by the road because of her husband. I was thinking about that the other day when a car missed me by twelve inches. I could feel it. And this was created by you guys. And you've ruined our lives. I've lived in this town for forty-four years. And it was a place, people should be the, your priority, not businesses. Well, you've ruined our lives down on Ann Arbor Trail. There are several subdivisions. I watch the kids cross at my corner every day and I know what's gonna happen. The police have done everything they can. If they're short-staffed, they can't sit there all day. And there's no solution. What are we gonna do when Amazon's grocery store opens too? I won't even be able to back out of my driveway. Our homes weren't designed, every morning I wake up, took the windows rattling in the living room because of semi is flying by. That never happened, ever. The only people who use Ann Arbor Trail were the residents. That's what it's designed for. And you need to pause and listen to people here. You're feeling the anger because we're frustrated with your decision-making process. I read your bios, although one of you have nothing, impressive, but what's your vision? Because we all moved here to live a peaceful, quiet, small-town life. We don't want every square inch of it filled with cement and businesses. And to then be killed in front of our house, mowing our lawns, trying to keep our property up. So I'm not sure how I feel about, I don't know enough information about the Meyer store. But you need to pause and listen to the residents right now.
You have ten seconds.
We are very frustrated. And you need to not keep pushing ahead. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jill Curtis. Um my husband and I are here. We live in Rolling Oaks, which is really close to my house. I can see from out my window the, the overpass for Ridge that goes over fourteen. So that traffic there is definitely an issue for us. And I think for a lot of people that live along there, just seeing that get busier. Um thirty-five hundred trips a day is a lot. I, I have to say, did you take objection that this fits the plan for the zoning? Um I think industrial is not commercial. We moved here seven years ago, and there's a element of trust that when you look at what's gonna come around you, you see what it will be. You know, no one knows the future, but you're, with all respect, making our future. You're seeing what it's going to be. And this Meyer will really change the character of the area. And I didn't really come down to the, sure, I wanted to hear the plan and I wanted to hear from people. And honestly, they really made me up my mind because I do know what I do by my host and the traffic. And I know that when we bought our house, I figured out how far it was gonna take, how long it's gonna take me to every place I wanted to drive. And I knew where I needed to go, and that was a huge factor for me. And having that congestion is a big deal. And I can tell you, when I come on fourteen and get to the back and I see a whole line of cars, like a nightmare, in the right lanes, I feel guilty in the left lane, like almost waiting and just going. But that's what it is. But we don't need any more of that. And I feel bad for the people that I see stuck on Beck Road, trying to get up to their houses. We don't need more of that. And I think that when we look at traffic and what your decisions are there, please understand that what you're really giving us or taking away from each of us is our time. Every day our commute is our time with our family. As long as it takes me to get home to my house, it's my time with my kids. And so that is so valuable. It's more valuable than my home, is my time with my family. What good is it if I can't enjoy it every long, every night? Or the frustration or your angry when you get home from getting in your car? And so I just really want you to think about that. I just think also that the other area might be smaller now, now. And you know all the things you're gonna wanna cluster around it because it's gonna be, you know, whatever, and it's gonna get, wanna get bigger. It's gonna breed more businesses. And this is a chance to determine the character of Five Mile Road in that area. You have, Meyer goes in there, it's not what it's supposed to be. Not what we were all told it was gonna be when we bought our houses there. So I guess it might be small now, but I mean, hey, who says they can't make a big deal? I've seen here with a run of Meyer now. Not that I don't want Meyer, I just don't want it to go to waste. So and the other point too is the jobs that are coming to a lady. You're not talking great jobs here. You're talking entry-level jobs. So you can say, "Jobs." Well, let's be careful. What jobs are we getting? Because I already have the industry and the tech jobs. Um so there's a whole lot of trust that's been given to each of you, that everyone who goes for you gives you because you see more information than we do. We do trust you. We trust you make good decisions for our future, for our families, for our time.
You have ten seconds.
And so that's what everyone is saying is, please, use your position of trust for good thing of what we're asking you to do.
Anyone else?
My name's Ruby Lyon and I'm a township president. And I, my biggest concern is crime that might be brought to the area that uh the big box stores I have heard bring. And I guess I would like to have a, a crime study done on that. Uh but I really uh have heard, heard a lot of negatives from my neighbors who live in that basic area uh between Reg and, and Powell and Beck and all those. Uh that they're very negative on both the track and the Meyer store. And I wanted to really address Meyer and tell them that women in Plymouth are weird. There are two very popular home-owned ice cream stores.
You have to speak into the mic.
There are two very popular home-owned ice cream stores. A third out-of-town ice cream store came into, into Plymouth. Nobody goes there. So that's the weird thing about women. I've got a lot of these women here, won't go to Meyer. They build it because they don't want it there. And I'm thinking my neighbors won't go either. So that's my input.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
My name's Gary File. I happen to be a resident of Northville Township. Uh I'm from Beckton, Six Mile. I've lived there for about five and a half years and I came to love both Northville and Plymouth for the quaint downtowns and the character that they have. Uh I'll also be transparent and tell you, I'm an associate at Bush's. So I certainly have an interest from a business perspective. Whether Meyer comes in here or does not come in here. For the people that spoke for Bush's, we appreciate you and uh we thank you for your support. Uh, we, we appreciate that very much. The woman that talked about the twelve grocery stores is obviously not an Asian grocery stores. And the thing I would focus on is why didn't Northfield say no? What was their answer for why they said no to that project? And, and have we looked at it and have we studied it? And I would assume it's public documents that he could probably go look at. I'll, I'll go find it and find out what the reason is. But I, I think the number-one issue here is really traffic. And, and you may say it's thirty-five hundred trips per day. It's thirty-five hundred in and thirty-five hundred out. I would assume that store is gonna do eighty to a hundred million dollars a year. Obviously, it's thirty thousand guests that are coming and going, uh, every week. I'd assume there's probably five hundred associates there, that two hundred of them are gonna be coming to the store every day. So now, that's fourteen hundred trips. You're gonna have trucks coming in there from tractor trailers to bread vendors, to soda vendors, to everybody else like we have at, at Bush's. Uh, but I drive down that road every single morning. And for the last two months, I've been going over to Six Mile to go down Sheldon to go back to Ann Arbor where I work. Uh, the traffic today is, is horrible. And I can't believe that thirty to thirty-five thousand more trips through that five-mile intersection, which I assume eighty percent of this is gonna come back towards Beck Road, is gonna do anything to, to enhance anybody's quality of life in the town of Planet or in the town of Northfield. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Kevin McCallum. I live in the subdivision, excuse me, opposite on Depot as well. Uh, on the board for the, uh, the housing commission there as well. Um, couple of points, I was actually, similar to Chuck, I think it was, that pointed out, I was actually sitting at home listening to this, uh, this meeting online and, uh, felt compelled to come down here. So that gives you an idea of how close we live to, to this city, uh, and also to the site. Um, I think this group is in a difficult position because you're actually approving or disapproving this facility for two communities. One being Northfield Township, one also being Plymouth. So, big decision to make. You've heard from a lot of people with, on the negative. I myself come from a development background, well aware of where these folks sit as well and the application. Interestingly enough, traffic is always the topic of conversation for large-scale retail development. Uh, I work with professional sports teams, so we have the same situation, more or not, in an urban setting. I can tell you from my time here, I'm from Australia, so I've been living in Northfield now for eighteen years. First, Northfield Township, first two years I lived in Canton, uh, just off, uh, just near Pheasant Run Golf Course. Traffic on Ford Road is horrendous. That was the reason we moved. That was the sole reason we moved. We liked the community. We liked our neighbors. But when traveling to Detroit every day for work at that stage, getting to and from our residents was a nightmare. And this is what's being proposed, thirty-five hundred cars a day through five-mile road. Preposterous. There's just no other way to describe it. We take our kids to school, Northfield High School, and meet meal, uh, meet meal elementary every day during the school year. Traffic is not good at that time, let alone adding this traffic, which is gonna be, whatever the operating hours are, it's still gonna be the same, day, night, summer, winter. It's gonna be constant. The other point I'd bring up is, for those of you that live in Northfield Township, Beck Road's been, uh, yeah, Beck Road has been under construction for the last few weeks. During that time, there's been at least two high school graduations. My daughter graduated from that class. Six hundred kids in that class. The road's under construction, the traffic, and we had a community event at the local park within that. So, the traffic was backed up from Five Mile to Six Mile. Think about that. That is from the intersection of Five Mile, heading south to get to the ice skating rink, past the baseball diamonds, all the way up to Six Mile. The six hundred students, but you would assume half of them are father and mother in car with student.
You have ten seconds.
You're talking roughly three hundred cars. And that line, if I'm not mistaken, is probably good to be almost a thirty-minute drive for a mile. And you're talking a fifth of what's being proposed here. Big decision to make. I hope you make the right one.
Thank you. Anyone else? If everyone, okay, yeah. Just gonna say, uh, once everyone has a chance to speak, and I'll check periodically on that, then those that may have thought of another topic have an additional three minutes. We've heard quite a bit about traffic. Uh, I think we're getting the message, but I know people feel that you wanna make sure you get that message across to us. I think you have. Uh, would appreciate it if you kind of put your creative thinking caps on and see if there's anything else that you're concerned about. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Linda Owers, and I do live in Plymouth Township. The reason I love or loved Plymouth Township is it's an upscale, lovely community where people care about one another. We care about the environment. We care about the beauty. We care about no traffic, minimal traffic, not big lights anywhere. It's a peaceful, restful sanctuary for those of us who have chosen to live there. The noise is minimal. However, I disagree with the comment I heard that this will have minimal negative impact. I could not agree more. Yes, I back to Ridge Road. And if you think I am not deeply concerned about widening Ridge Road, you will annihilate my backyard, my right to enjoyment of where I live. You'll absolutely demolish my peaceful surroundings. If you feel that Ridge Road with one lane north, one south will accommodate this, you're wrong. If you think that two lanes currently on Five Mile will accommodate this, please think again. I am concerned about who is gonna pay for the cleanup expense. The amount of fifteen million dollars has been bantered back and forth saying that that cleanup will fall on the residents of Plymouth Township. Wow, really? I'm extremely concerned about what this will do to the entire area. I am very upset that on that little map where you showed Home Depot and the bank, and you forgot Buddy's, I won't hold that against you. Um, I would like to see on that map where exactly this proposed Myers is. I did not see that on the map. I think this is gonna destroy our peaceful community. I agree with the person who said, "Who are you gonna get to work there?" Everyone's desperate for good workers. Um, there's a whole bunch of reasons why I oppose this.
You have ten seconds.
All right. It's gonna be congestion, noise, traffic, everything I didn't want when I moved here. Thank you.
My name's Dale Bernhardt. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
We're getting to be old friends. I'm talking here a lot. I'll make this short. I wanna talk about zoning. Uh, we know this is zoned industrial, and it's zoned light industrial. And we know what the goals and the objectives were in the plans. And that's high-quality jobs, high-tech jobs. So this clearly does not fit that zoning. So what the boards have, and not just this community here, but others, they have special land use and PUDs, and these are defaults. And you can just kind of throw these things out and kind of violate the zoning. To me, this is the, the clear problem with, with what we are facing. Why are we using special land use? Why do we even have a planning department? Why do we have a zoning department? We violate it when we want to see something else come in. Why don't we follow the plan that we paid these people to do, and they spent all this time? The other question I have, what are the, uh, and I'll address to you, the store hours? Um, and I wonder if the, the traffic does, the traffic plan does sweep up those store hours 'cause obviously it's not just gonna be eight to five. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Donna Davis, excuse me, and I'm a resident of Plymouth Township. Um, I'm almost embarrassed to say this, it's my first township meeting that I've ever gone to. And I've been around for a long time. I grew up in Plymouth. Lived for a long time and then moved back home. And Plymouth is everything that everyone has shared today as far as why they love living here. I'm not sure how it works with the commission, but I would assume that we're having this meeting to discuss the pros and the cons about why we want Meyer to be here. So far, I don't have, no one said they want it. Not one person, except for the people from Meyer. So I, I hope to take that into consideration when you make your decision. Also, I wanna say how gratifying it is.
You have to look toward us 'cause, uh, because of the mic.
Okay. Also, I wanna say how gratifying it is to hear so many people from the community share their deep self-foughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm Gary Robinson. I'm an architect and I'm the planner for MITC. I thought it might be appropriate, just because I've heard a lot about traffic and roads and things, I could just share with you a little bit of a brief status report, if I could, about where MITC is going.
You know, I was going to ask you, I have, uh, after we finish the public hearings, to see if you wouldn't come up and talk about, a little bit about that, especially the mission, the person that raised the issue up about the mission. And I wanna give you more than three minutes to, to respond. Okay, why don't I stand down then until you're ready? Okay, sounds great, and I, I think the others will be interested in hearing what you have to say.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Great. If, uh, okay, you've, you've spoken. Is there anyone else here that hasn't spoken that wishes to speak? You've already spoken. You've spoken. Yeah. Anyone else? And then, okay, now we'll start with.
I have to, I have to use the.
Somebody back there.
Okay.
Can I get an extra minute, please? I text you, I just want to say, you know, when Bob wants to sit here.
But I didn't, I couldn't hear you, what you said.
I said, "My name is Hassan Ayew. I came all the way from Dearborn."
Oh, okay.
Because I was looking at Facebook, and I'm a public activist. When I see negative information, I go all around the city, all, all around Michigan. I work for, advocate for kids, advocate for people, advocate for humans because the body over here always shifts to the right. They're not with the citizens. They said over here, they came up to you today and said, "They don't want the Myers." I don't believe that they do. You get Bob over here telling me I don't know how to do a foyer? I'm the foyer king. I want you guys, hold on, to go on, fi, and, and Google, put Hassan Ayew in Dearborn. See how many times I've been on national news? The other day, I was on national news. October eleventh, I made national news. I'm always doing foias, but he's wanna sit there and disrespect me? I didn't disrespect the gentleman. You know, these people don't want the Myers? I'm asking you guys to do a motion, deny the Myers, nice and simple. Myers is gonna come here and say, "We do our own traffic study." But what year are we in? We're in two thousand and twenty-three. We are supposed to sit here and bring Wayne County, and Wayne County or whoever, Oakland County, whoever you guys wanna bring you, to come here and do the traffic study. Now, I'm gonna ask the people in the audience, how many people seen a traffic study being done by Myers there right now? I just wanna know. Have, do you live over here in the area? Did you see the traffic study because they have to hold the rope and everything? Did you see it?
We're gonna have a discussion about traffic study here in a few.
Yeah, but they're trying to say that they make their own traffic study about, on, on Hagerty, how many people walking in the place. It's not about how many people walking in Myers. I go to the fitness center over there in Novi. Do you know how hectic traffic is over there? Sometimes I have to wait ten minutes to get on the left light to turn to two seventy-five. They already have a Myers there. The guy who has a business, grocery store, you gotta close this grocery store down? Is Myers gonna buy a mall? The guest, the shishel, who's gonna buy a mall? I asked you to suspend the rules chair and take road car. You don't even know what that means. I'm gonna send you an email today, the Robert Rules of Order, okay? And you're gonna sit there and obey by the Robert Rules of Order. When I tell you to suspend the rules and put a motion on the floor and take road car, that's what I expect you guys to do. Not to humiliate me, not to embarrass me because I'm the gentleman here that came from Dearborn to help these residents to make sure you deny this today, not tomorrow, today. They don't wanna hear it, you have to hear from them at the end of the day. Thank you, sir. Have a great one.
You too.
Was there someone else who wanted to speak before I?
I've heard, was our first-time speaker? Yeah, the first-time speaker, okay.
Good evening. My name is Joe Sayah. And I've owned a couple of businesses in the township here for the past twenty years or so. And I love the township so much to the point that I ended up moving here. So I've been a resident for about twelve years. I've convinced my brother to move here, which he did. I'm in the process of moving my mom even here from a different city since my dad passed away. And I'm even convincing my sister and her family to move here and a few other friends. We've loved this township for the past twenty years, like I said. Now, talking about the businesses that I've owned, I have a restaurant called The Red Island Restaurant, right there on Five Mile and back. Um, probably like the first twelve to thirteen years of first, uh, years of my business, my business has been thriving. I mean, it's been booming. Uh, and it relies a lot on, uh, business and businesses with like research and technology center in the area and a lot of, like, families that live in the area. But the past, I would say, four to five years, it's been a struggle. Ever since construction started on, uh, Beck Road and Five Mile, it disrupted business. But we made it through. And then, once we were done with the construction, then obviously the traffic jam started. And a lot of my customers stopped coming over because they couldn't make it on time, lunchtime, lunch break, whatnot. Then, we get here with a pandemic, and that was definitely a struggle, but we survived. We made it through. Then, again, you know, recently, we had another, uh, short period of time of construction. And that was a struggle also, but we made it through. So I'm not sure how long we can survive, you know, whether it's me or other family-owned businesses or, you know, local businesses, you know, whether it's construction or traffic jam. Uh, you know, it's definitely been a struggle. And I know some people mentioned, who's gonna pay for all the costs for the cleanup and the construction? That's not really my concern. My concern is, who is willing to compensate for the loss of business that all these, you know, private-owned businesses are gonna go through? If nobody can compensate, then definitely they'll be shutting their doors because I can, I can tell you right now, it's gonna be a struggle and I cannot survive. You know, whether people can make it, you know, on time for lunch or even dinner, they cannot make it through the traffic, uh, jam. So, I've, you know, I've had to invest more money into my business to do deliveries. We're doing DoorDash. We're paying extra cost so we can get the food to the people's businesses or homes. And it's definitely been a struggle. That's extra expense out of our pocket.
You have ten seconds.
Definitely hurting our business. And finally, I own, so I own two restaurants in the area. And there's other restaurants. There are right across the street from Myers, like one in Wix and one in Canton. And I can tell you, crime is definitely a problem.
Okay, I can't let you go any further. Thank you. I appreciate your hard work and trying to keep your businesses going.
Well, I was, uh, my name is Yassim Rabbabi. I'm actually a resident of, uh, Northfield Township, and I own two businesses in Plymouth Township, right there on Five Mile, so I'm gonna be experiencing, uh, both sides of this. Uh, as a resident, right there off of Five and Back, the Arcadia Ridge subdivision, and our. and our entranceway is at the Northville Community Park there, off of Five Mile across from Home Depot. So I deal with the traffic. And as a business owner on Five Mile and Beck, with the premium lube and the premium wash right inside that Shell gas station. So I'm experiencing this as a resident and as a business owner. As Joe touched on, with his Red Olive Restaurant, traffic matters not just for getting home on time, seeing our families, and being able to have a easy flow of, you know, getting to and from our homes, but just from a business person's perspective, when there's congestion, when there's delays, the last thing people want to do is have an additional stop before they get home. They're just, at that point, give up and just want to go home. So this affects people in many ways, the way they spend their money, the way they are influenced in their communities. Also that a large, big store national presence can drive away some small business. One of the things, and the reason why I waited till the end, hoping I can have others touch on this, is the crime rate that Myers specifically brings. Meyer does not bring a high-end crime. Being a resident of Northville, the people in Northville wanted a Whole Foods or a Plum Market at that Five Mile and Beck location, ideally. Meyer was proposed, and we pushed them off, I guess, to you guys, because it seems like you guys want our leftovers. You took the Northville Race Track, we figured you might as well take Myers as well. And the reason why we got rid of the Race Track is we're trying to develop our downtown and our city to be more of a community space, not something that brings gambling and crime. Did you hear about the bomb threat at the Northville Meyer in 2018? It scared the crap out of all the residents in the area. Northville couldn't handle it. I'm surprised to see if Plymouth would be able to handle any of these issues being short-staffed. They had to call in the Michigan State Bomb Squad to come and resolve the matter. People were in lockdown for many hours throughout that day. And this is just another scenario waiting to happen. And the reason why I say that is, it's very close to M14. It breeds crime when you're close to interstates, because people can.
You have 10 seconds.
Easily. So crime should be the most important aspect of this decision, outside of traffic counts and the way people feel about bringing Meyer into their community.
Thank you. Any other first-time speakers?
This is a stand-up podium. I've been here before, I'd be glad if this could be like mounted, so everybody doesn't have challenges. But yeah, thank you for indulging me. My name is Stacy Romine, I'm a Plymouth Township resident. I've lived here for about 35 years. I came here tonight only hearing about this a few days ago, not with any preconceived notions. I just wanted to understand what people's feelings and sentiments were. And I've sat and listened to a lot of commentary. I live on the west side of the township, on the Lebonia side, and honestly have looked to the west side of the township with a little envy over the last number of decades. The, there was less traffic, quieter properties, or a few reasons. I don't really have the same feelings anymore with the recent development proposals and decisions that are happening on the west side of, of the community. They don't impact me specifically, directly on this side of town, although I will tell you Hagerty and Interwood Road is pretty crazy, and it's looking to turn into a mini Ford Road over there, which I'm really not terribly thrilled about. All the residents here who are talking about traffic, et cetera, they understand that development is expected for vacant land. But when residents do, they do their best to anticipate the future based on master plans of the community. Residents are cognizant of easements, what can be happened with those easements, the potential impact for their property with development. But they research the character of the community and the master plans and the zoning, and the decisions where to live. So they're, it's fair to them to take a look at what's planned for these properties and understand the interests of the residents and the character of the community that's been developed over a number of years. So all I ask you tonight, since I don't have the biggest horse in the game, living where I live, is that you please listen to the residents that are here and their interests that are expressed, and stay true to the township master plan and the special development, I don't even know what they're called, I apologize, but the exceptions that continue to be considered, they're tough on the residents that have done their own research already and have made the decisions to live where they're living and then have the rug pulled out from under them in their perspective. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Any other first-time speakers? Okay? Oh, okay.
Two hours. It's two hours.
How are you doing this evening? I wasn't planning to come here tonight, but my brother Joe mentioned it to me, and after I thought about it, I'm not big on doing public, addressing public meetings and all that. But then after I thought about it, maybe I should come, because this affects me, affects my family, my business, my livelihood, my daughters, which go to school, OLGC. We go to church at OLGC, we have businesses in Plymouth. And I feel like I should be able, just like everybody else here, to speak my mind, because this is my home, this is where I plan to be, I hope I die happy here.
Not too soon.
So, a couple of things, I mean, obviously, traffic is a big problem. Myers did their own research on it. We own a Shakers on Farmington, on Ford Road and Canton Center. And I mean, if I was to do the research on the traffic, just one of you guys, come sit with me for lunch, my treat, come and take a look at a busy time and see how traffic is. There has been a couple accidents with deaths at the intersection there, especially when there's construction, it's horrible. Our business is down about 20, 30% when there's construction. And I mean, yeah, Meyer was there before me, but if I had done my homework better than that, then I probably would not have been in that location. Same thing with the Myers and Wixom. Same situation, we have a Red Olive there and a Shakers there. And when there's construction, again, come on over for lunch, breakfast, take a look. You can do your own research and see, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't take a professional, take a look. Because you got to sit there, watch traffic at different times of the day, and you'll see. Also, another thing, I have one of my customers in Canton that comes in, he's actually employed at Myers, and he comes in occasionally, and he's a resident of Canton. And one of his main complaints to me is, he cannot find people that live in Canton to work at Myers. Most of his staff employees are from outside cities that come there to work. Another thing is, I would urge you to possibly talk to your law enforcement. I know in the past, we, I've talked to some that are my friends, and they have said, you know, it's been very hard for them to keep up with the development in Canton, I mean, in Plymouth, especially with Robusta. They, since that has opened, they have been very busy trying to regulate some of the problems they have there. So I don't know if that's true or not, and if you think about it, you're bringing another business into the city where it's going to employ mostly people outside of your city? If that's another thing you want to be liable for and want to take on. Other stuff, I mean, why Northville turned down?
You have 10 seconds.
And, I mean, there's, I could go on and on and on, but I think I've touched on the main points from my personal experience. I have businesses next to Myers, that's what I see. More than welcome, come take a look for yourself.
Okay, thank you for coming. Any other first-time speakers? Okay, floor is yours for three minutes.
Thank you. So I'm glad crime got discussed, because when it was in Northville Township, I was involved in the Northville Township Myers episode. And the township representative spoke about it, downplayed it all, you know, ever since they did this and that, it's been fine. So I talked to Mark Abbo, who was a former township supervisor, now a current township supervisor shortly after that. And I asked him about crime at Myers. He laughed, was laughable, the answer that was given at that meeting. And, and that makes me question, you know, the, you know, the results of the analysis, the special use review by, by the planner who's paid by the township, whose boss is Kurt Heisey, who has some kind of weird interest in wanting this to go forward. But anyway, he said, it's ridiculous how much crime, the police are there constantly. I talked to someone the other day about the Meyer, because it's topical, and he goes, I was there two days ago, I go there once a year, I was there two days ago, there was a car. You people have enough information to not approve this today. What you do not have is enough information to approve it today. You have to get another crime study, you have to get crime statistics from Canton and Northville, right? You need to have your public safety department give you an impact study, how this is going to affect public safety. Because when the police are five mile, they're not an Ann Arbor Trail. They're not an Ann Arbor Road. They're not in our other commercial areas, in our residential areas, able to serve our citizens. You need more than a two-page traffic study, but really, it is awful. It is very damning. How can you approve this with this? Based on this information that tells you it's going to be crippling to the residents? I looked online for 15 minutes at least, I couldn't find publication of this meeting. The ordinance requires publication in a newspaper. I don't know if it was published, I would like to know what newspaper was published and what day it was published on. You know, one of the things they, they talk about is bringing advantage is taxes. All the taxes are going to go to remediation, there's not going to be any additional taxes that come in the city coffers from this, zero. But yet, there's going to be lots of public service use. Again, the city planner, bought and paid for by Kurt Heisey, they went through these statistics, and they do not account at all for the traffic, minimize it, the crime, minimize it.
You have 10 seconds.
You can go through, if I had more time, as Myers was going to have, I could go through the plan review and pick it apart based on how they. All the community comments.
All right, thank you. Any other second speakers? And if you come up for a second time, try to come up with some different ideas.
Very, very quick.
Okay.
So first, who do you work for? Who does the planning commissioner work for?
We work for the township.
The people.
That's right.
You work for the people.
Exactly.
Who do you plan, who do you plan for? Who do you plan for? The people. You plan for the people.
And remember, we are also the people.
I, you're planners for the people. That's your job, that's your role. This is not the will of the people of Plymouth. I've been talking to people about what has been happening in the last few months here. They want to leave. The elderly are regretting that they live here now. You're corrupting their town.
I'm surprised you're saying this when we haven't even had a discussion yet. You don't know how anybody feels.
Okay, okay, let's just finish.
You're up here attacking us, and we haven't even had a discussion.
Okay. It's her, it's her time to talk.
You need to say no now. The people don't want it. The elderly want to leave the town they've lived in. People, there's no reason for a Myers, and you know it. Act on your conscience, dig inside a little bit, listen to your conscience.
Anyone else, hopefully with some new thoughts? Yes, sir.
Let's wrap this up, Dennis, it's been over two hours.
Well, we've always followed this.
I know, but this is.
The people's chance to talk.
My name is Ron Ho, I live at Glendale Drive in Plymouth, right behind Township Park. Could I see a show of hands of everybody on the commission who was elected to their position? No? You weren't elected?
No, we're all appointed. We're all appointed.
By whom? By whom?
The township.
The supervisor?
The supervisor?
Make, no, let me, I'm not done talking.
Can you see why we all have psychological indigestion with the decisions that you're trying to make? That's all I have to say.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we will close the public hearing at 9:04.
It's been two hours.
So we're done with public hearing. So I'm going to ask Mr. Roberts, who, you can introduce yourself to the group. And if you can give us some detail on the mission of this district and sort of the history of it. And perhaps you can talk a little bit about the road improvement and how that might be funded.
Okay, I'd be happy to.
Lot on your plate, but I know you can handle it.
Okay. Yeah, this will be a little bit, a little bit ad hoc here. But I'm Gary Roberts, I'm an architect and I'm the planner for MITC. The MITC partners are Plymouth Township, Northville Township, Wayne County, and the state of Michigan. Plymouth Township and Northville Township oversee the board effectively. They are, you know, they are the MITC. What we have, what MITC has basically is 800 gross acres, about 520 buildable acres or so, which is a brownfield in accordance with Public Act 381. So what does that mean? Because there's a lot of discussion about, gee, how much money is going to be spent on remediating this site? But the way that this works, in this particular area, because of the level of contamination, this is designated as a brownfield site. So if Meyer or anybody comes along within our district and says, I want to build a building right here, I want to improve this property, what happens is that this is a tax increment finance, meaning on the first day, it has zero value. After the day it's built, it has a taxable value. Portion of that taxes are collected to repay, repay the developer of this building, who fronted, by the way, all the money, all the money that it take to make the improvements, to make the remedial efforts, everything else. He fronted all the money, and a part of his taxes are going to come back to him over the next 20 or 30 years to repay his investment. In the absence of his investment, there is no tax dollars exchanged. So let's just be clear about how this actually works. You don't, you don't call up the town and say, please send Meyer or anybody $10 million and go clean up their site, it doesn't work that way. They front the money, they get it back over time. That's just the way the Brownfield Act is, is, okay? So right now, the church of what's happening right now in terms of the road, we have been, we, meaning the partners, have been very aggressive in trying to procure funding. And we've been quite successful, actually. We have more than $2, $2.5 million in grants that we've received already. And what those are going for is traffic, traffic study, traffic engineering. And we've retained OHM advisors as our, as our advisors. And we've got a congestion mitigation grant, which is going to fund entirely a traffic light and a new intersection at Ridge and Five Mile, so that, so that, that, under the guise of congestion mitigation, that, that will be paid for through the grant, through, through some federal dollars that are flowing our way. And again, the partners have been very active in trying to pursue this. The goal is that we'll have a brand-new Five Mile Road, three lanes, from where it tapers down from Five and Beck. But from where it tapers down at Beck, three-lane, a new three-lane road all the way to Napier, and a new, a new Ridge Road, which will remain two-lane, but have the appropriate improvements in it, because it doesn't warrant, traffic doesn't warrant Ridge Road being a higher, a higher use. But Ridge Road through the MITC property limits, which is basically from Johnson Controls or from Pallier Drive to the north side of MITC, which is right about the Johnson Creek Bridge. So those road improvements are not only being thought about, but they're almost completely engineered. They've been to Wayne County to, for, for the first level of review. Somebody was looking for a traffic study, you don't have to FOIA it, I'll give it to you, just, I'll give you my card, I'll give you the darn thing. But it's, it's rather extensive, and it's done by, again, OHM advisors under contract from the MITC authority. from the MITC authority. So we're, we're well along in the plan. We recognize that in order for this to be successful, we're going to have to respond to the traffic. Right now, MITC was, is, is a brand, okay? Michigan International Technology Center. The first, picking up on all of the surrounding businesses which have an international flavor. The first building in, in the zone was John Ding, which is a Chinese grommet manufacturer or some such thing. But there's right there on Five Mile Road. There's the first one here. But there is a, a theory that started with the MITC board, which said, no matter what we do, we are not going to violate, we're not going to ask for, and we're not going to violate the ordinances, zoning ordinances for the industrial zone. So if the zoning ordinance allows for it, we feel that we can ask for it. If it doesn't allow for it, we're probably not chasing it. So right now, we have about a million and a half square feet of various industrial buildings planned in the, on both sides of the road between Napier, some are actually Wayne County-Napier, but between Napier and Beck that are planned. They're either under construction, as Mr. McSweeney's project is, on Ridge, or they're on the drawing boards are very close to being, being built. So the, the goal of, of having the industrial complex there is, is, is certainly intact. The contemplation was that there would always be amenity uses, daycare, or medical attention facilities, restaurants, those kinds of things would be needed to support our development. So that, that's been contemplated from the beginning and those ordinances also contemplate that, too. We actually have three ordinances that we are governed by. Plymouth Township has one single industrial zone. Plymouth Town, Northville Township has an industrial zone and an ORT, Office Research Tech, and they have a mixed use on, depending on which side of Ridge Road you're on, which, which zoning they, they follow. But again, our goal is to, as, as MITC planners, is to pursue businesses and transactions that fit the local ordinance, not asking for something special. So again, I think the road funding is important to understand that, that the goal is, again, not to come to the local community and ask for road funding. The environmental remediation, again, the goal is not to come to the local community and ask for support. I know that the Meyer project is, is controversial from a traffic standpoint, but I think we're, we're taking steps to mitigate that. I know in Northville Township, I believe that project was actually approved and withdrawn by the developers so that they could put in more of the homes that were concreted in there. I wasn't directly above that, but that's my understanding of it. So, anyway, not advocating for one project or another. I just wanted to bring you up to speed as to what is happening at, at MITC right now. I, my personal feeling is that, that Meyer can fit the profile of the town and meet the goals of MITC and be there. We're talking about 20 acres, about 520 acres.
You're going to say anything that you got to say?
I'm sorry?
You're going to say anything that you got to say?
Yes.
Yeah, MITC pays me. No question about that. So that's enough. Is there any question you have about the authority, MITC authority, and how they're operating and what they're doing?
It's traffic study. To go back to that for a second, so that I can understand it better and perhaps the commissioner's.
So MITC authorized OHM to do a detailed traffic study, which resulted in something that said a three-lane road is going to be required all the way.
Right, but the, the summary that we heard this evening, that was from that traffic study?
Ah, sure.
Yeah, I can address that. And before I do, I want to straighten out a, a public misunderstanding that there was a reference to a, a traffic study for the previous Meyer and Northville being 50 pages and a traffic study by us being two pages. That's complete fallacy. There was a 159-page traffic study by Bergman Engineers, part of the Meyer team, to address the traffic concerns. It was submitted to our office as the township engineers to review that and summarize that into a two-page study, which we did and presented that tonight as initial two-page review. And was there something more we could add at this point, additional question we didn't answer?
Well, I, speaking for myself and the other commissioners can chime in, but I'm still a little confused about the, the traffic study and who paid for what and how long is this study? And there are some deficiencies in the roadway system and how will those be addressed? I, I think we need more information on that whole.
Okay. The MIT, I can only speak to the MITC one, and that was done last fall, under contract with the authority, MITC Authority Board. And that is what generated the current specification, which is for a three-lane road, which would have all the pertinent things like XL and DCL and passing and all those things, as you need, as well as the intersection improvements at Napier and at Ridge. Beck is pretty well established in terms of what it is. But the traffic study did focus on those and has all the turning motions and so forth. I don't know if you have seen that, but that's, it's, it's out there in the world. And I, and I have it on my computer. I can send it to anybody that wants it.
Will be.
Okay, all right. Give me my card.
So does the commission have any questions on the traffic study? We've heard so much about that this evening. I want to make sure that, that all your questions and concerns are addressed.
Why is it becoming public?
It is public, sir. It's, 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 it's been submitted to Wayne County as a part of the permit process.
And the, the additional traffic study, as well as the Meyer concept plans, is made public on the Plymouth Township website. That's where I myself downloaded it from and the public has access to that as, as well, on the Plymouth Township website.
Why was that first thing about you putting it on?
I downloaded it yesterday, the, the traffic study by Bergman Engineers.
Sir, you know, this is disruptive. You've had your chance to speak. Now it's our turn, okay? Please be courteous. All right, thank you.
For, for the three-lane road, does that mean one lane east, one lane west, and a center one?
Yes, sir. Plus, plus passing and XL, DCL.
Sure. Did the traffic study include a Meyer?
The traffic study goes a 40-year look forward.
Did it include?
Did, did, no, it did not specifically include Meyer. It takes a 40-year window of anticipated uses and, and develops the, the study.
Did it include the race track?
Did not, did not.
With the warehouse supply chain?
Okay, okay. Those items were not, were kind of, those items were not included because they were, those items were not included, from my understanding, because those items have just come up. They weren't present or even planned at that time. Okay.
What, what did you do at the traffic study? What did you do?
Okay, you know, we've, you had your chance to talk about the traffic studies. So let us finish here. Now it's our turn to understand it. And by listening, hopefully it will address your concerns. These are notes that I've taken. So please be courteous. I've asked that before. Now you're raising your hands, but you had your chance. What is it? Ma'am, listen to you one time. That's it. What is it? You. Yeah, what?
Um, yeah. So other people were asking questions. I was just raising my hand politely to see if I could ask their questions. Is that all right?
The public hearing is over.
The public hearing is over.
So my, my question to you, sir, is, other individuals pointed out that the Meyer store was not, you mentioned two, maybe three times in your analysis, that your study was done based on the zoning that had been approved. So for the technology part, so that, and I, did I miss hear you?
So the way that this, the purchase, the study is purchased, they look at the current condition and they look at a forward look of, I think it's till 24, something like that. They look way forward and to, and try to make projections about land use and how many cars and trucks and so forth may occupy that portion. Meyer and the horse thing was not even contemplated when we ordered that study.
Right, because I think you said, I think you said it, it was done based on what zoning was approved for that area.
Right.
Okay, so if everything you did for that study was done on the zoning that was approved for the area, the question before the planning committee tonight is, are you going to change the zoning, which would mean that study would, how would it need to be redone?
Ma'am, we're not, ma'am.
I would like to clarify.
Hold on just a minute. We're not changing the zoning.
The special use does not require the zoning to be changed. It's, it's, it's provided under the act as written.
Okay. I understand.
All right.
So I would like to clarify that the, the traffic study that our team reviewed was the traffic study that was more recent, performed by Bergman, and that was for specifically the Meyer. And that traffic study actually recognizes and incorporates the traffic study that was performed by OHM and the MITC team.
Okay. So it's been blended?
It, it's been included, yes.
Okay.
All that information is included.
There you go. That's information I don't even have.
Question.
Yeah. Any questions on the traffic study?
I'm unclear on what the definitive plan is for Five Mile Road in the, you, you've explained what the improvements are that are recommended. What is the definitive plan? When will it actually be built? Can we up here understand that it is a done deal or is it still an open question?
Right. Well, as, as I mentioned, at the moment, we are in an engineering phase and dealing with Wayne County, getting our plans approved through that, which takes several months, by the way, because it's a rail complex.
But it's not funded.
It's not funded. The hard costs are not funded. The soft costs, the engineering has been funded. And there's a, currently a $10 million appropriation, which would be our phase, what we call phase one, which is Ridge and Ridge to Beck on Five Mile. That's our phase one. Okay? There's a $10 million appropriation at the state level that our guys are working on. It's above my pay grade, but our lobbyists and, and those people that through the county are working on getting that product done right now. The goal would be to have this construction commencement in 2024, which will wrap up that first phase in 2025. That's the goal.
But, but as of right now.
It's not funded.
As we sit here today, I don't have the money to build it.
Okay.
It's speculative.
What, heard me?
I say it's speculative at this point.
It's speculative at this point, but it's better than that because we've got a lot of correspondence and a lot of activity at the Lansing level that suggests that it's better than speculative.
And that's $10 million out of an estimated $25 million, correct?
No, just for the, the road work itself is, is, to take you all the way to Napier is more like 18.
18?
Because there's a bridge and two rail crossings in there.
And that doesn't include the, that doesn't include the widening of Ridge. There's no widening of Ridge.
There is no widening of Ridge, but there's a rebuild of Ridge so that it becomes less, not weight restricted.
Right.
Because there's industrial down there, which has got to get year-round traffic. And right now, it doesn't have that.
Okay.
I do have another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's not about traffic. Is that okay?
Please. Any other traffic questions?
But I have a question.
Okay, all right.
Some of the, some of the citizens here tonight were curious as to why some of the nature of the businesses are changing in MITC. It's my understanding that the pandemic greatly affected that, that, can you address that?
I, I can briefly. I, I would say the overall goal of MITC has not changed and we still have a great deal of light industrial product, which will include automotive firms and other R and D things that are be within them. But they've gone to a larger footprint, to a multi-tenant product, partly for distribution. This last mile, just in time, distribution things are, are, are much more of a market factor than they were when we first did our projections out there. So that's what's changed. There's less of the, less of the freestanding tech and more of the big box right now, today. What, what's going to happen two years from now, I, I would bet you, yes.
And isn't it also true that a lot of the really good-paying jobs that people were referring to, those have all gone remote?
Well, I'm sorry, those have.
I mean, a lot of those workers are working remotely, correct?
No, I, I think we're going to see a lot of really good-paying jobs in, in, in the quarter in total. In fact, I, I'm projecting almost 8,000 new jobs by the time this thing gets done.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
I, I have one other question.
Yeah, sure.
Um, no.
Oh, sorry.
Um, the, as I understand it, the VTEC, when you look at the MITC site, there's a road that comes off of Five Mile, just west of the Meyer site, and goes down back into that area. And there were about six or seven lots in there. That was announced probably four or five years ago, but doesn't appear that there's been any progress on that. Can you explain why that's the case?
Speculative.
Yeah, I don't know. Dale, do you want to speak to, to the speculative part of?
I don't, I, I, I think it's speculative at this point. I don't have.
That's right. They have 40, see, Bradik is developing about 60 acres. There's about 40 left. One of the schemes would be to have that road that you're talking about, parallel the westerly property line of Meyer, to access the property at the rear or south side of Meyer. That's a, that's a very viable alternative, to the extent that somebody doesn't come in and buy the whole thing. That's still, it's still an option.
Anything else, Tim? No, that's it. Well, thanks for coming by. Appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you.
Any applicant is here? Some representative from the applicant?
I don't think they heard you, Dennis.
Oh, is the applicant here? That, we have a few more questions, I think. So one of, one of the issues that was raised was crime.
Yes, sir.
Are there any ways to address that? Give us some data? You know, we're sort of a data-driven group.
We certainly, Meyer certainly is very concerned about crime. Most of the crime is perpetrated on Meyer itself. So we're very concerned about crime. We're concerned about our teammates and their safety, our customers and their safety, people that visit the Meyer store. We are very concerned about. What Meyer does to combat crime is we have the most sophisticated technology and camera systems available in our buildings and surrounding our buildings, and in our parking lots, in our doors, over above our, our cash registers, any place transactions take place. We also have, every store has a loss prevention officer who is responsible for locking the store and trying to deter theft. And we also have a greeter at each entrance. And surprisingly enough, you, the greeters are a deterrent to crime. We also, statistics to prove this. I mean, we have 50 million square feet. We've been in business 90 years. And we've seen crime ebb, flow. Each community is extremely unique in their societal issues. Meyer is concerned about these, these items. We believe as a company that what contributes to theft is food insecurity. And we do our part, and I think we donated over $80 million to a program called Simply Give, to help with food insecurities. And we help with multiple organizations in each community we serve. We also support the police. We support the sheriffs. We support the schools. We support vocational learning. We employ 70,000 people. We provide jobs, benefits, all to deter crime. Certain stores have different levels of crime. Statistics are available. We plan those stores based on the statistical analysis of the crime in the area.
Do you find that what crime exists, taken, for example, I'm certain, as you have stated, that much of the crime is against Myers itself, you know, shrinkage of merchandise? But what about the, your customers coming in and out? Do you find very much violent crime out in the parking lots? I mean, it's actually at the.
Unfortunately, it's a, you know, there's crimes in schools and nightclubs and neighborhoods and, and parking lots. There's crimes all over America. What we find is that the, there are very few exceptions. The majority of the crime is theft and theft within our stores. And we call that shrink. It's a, oftentimes our shrink levels can be astronomically in the multi-multi-millions of dollars. So we need to do our best to protect our products. And you'll see products. And you'll see products behind glass, you'll see products behind locked doors, you'll see products that are secured, and those are particularly more higher-dollar items. All that deters theft. We have the ability to control all of our lighting on every store in our six-state footprint from our corporate office. So we can power down stores, leave certain lights on where employees park, we can put wall packs on doors so those doors are lit. We can do things that protect their safety. You know, our major concern is the team members, the employees, and our guests.
What hours are you planning on? Do all Myers have the same hours, or?
We do it a little differently. We have different formats of stores. Our supercenters right now are running 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Is this considered a supercenter, what you're proposing? Any other questions from the commission on the Myers representative? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thoughts or comments from the commission? Anything other concerns you wish to raise?
I have some comments prepared. So I think the public comment from the guy from Northville who showed up and insulted Plymouth Township was probably my favorite one, but moving on. So, you know, as we go through the six criteria and we evaluate that, you know, they're very much subjective, we all know that. Sometimes it's a matter of opinion, sometimes it's more fact. But I have like a lot of what I call "yeah, buts" in the criteria, meaning that, you know, yeah, that's a good point, but I have maybe a different kind of point of view here. So one of the things that I wanted to really clarify here among the board is, and this is really hard to get your head around how these brownfields work, it took me a long time, but basically, the reason for brownfields is that particularly in cities, you want to redevelop property that is contaminated, and a developer would normally not be able to afford to do that if they had to pay for all of the cleanup of the contamination. So you don't want to, you want to, it cuts down on urban sprawl, and you want to redevelop the properties, right? So the township is not subsidizing that. What happens is that as the value of that property goes up, therefore, then the taxable value does, and the taxes collected go up. And for a period of time until the developer who invested in the cleanup of that site is paid back, those taxes are redirected, so it's kind of like a loan. But it's not an out-of-pocket expense from the township. That's a myth that people have been spreading, that is not true. One of the things that, I scratched a bunch of notes down, and now I can't read them. But under criteria one, I think as we've discussed a lot, it's not the intent of the MITC to have retail big box. It was never the intent. I get it, Gail, things change, markets change, but to take that jump from industrial and technology, office buildings, and research centers to big-box retail, I think is a pretty significant jump in mission. Home Depot is not part of the MITC. That was there long before it is. By the way, I'm a big fan of the MITC, the concept. I think it's really, really a great use of the redevelopment of that property. But it was never comprehended in any of the discussions that I was part of, that that would be a big-box retail as an option and that. So it's kind of like, you know, you talk about improvements to infrastructure, and are those improvements, do they, does the impact on the infrastructure equal or outweigh the improvements that you're doing to the infrastructure? Then you become kind of in a, you're taking a step backwards, right? So we've widened the road, but we've overwhelmed the road, even in its widened condition, is what concerns me. In criteria 1B, it's not consistent with the master plan. We've talked, it's talked a lot about, you know, what kind of jobs were anticipated. You know, it's no, this is not a slam on the employees of Meyer or any other business, but if they're sole wage earners, they're typically not going to be at pay levels that would afford them to live in our community. It's just, that's just a reality of our community. In our community, the financials are very healthy. If you had a chance to see the audit review last week, you would have learned that we're very cash-rich. So, you know, when we talk about growing the tax base, you know, that's important and it's valuable, but at some point, it has a diminishing value. If you're filling the township with big-box retail and you're growing the tax base, it has a diminishing value because you're not going to go and lower taxes for people. And, you know, we are a very sound community financially. We take in more money than we spend, and we're really well-managed, and we're a very sound community financially. The thing, what's interesting about, one of the arguments that people make for it is that it adds additional shopping options for people in Plymouth Township, Northville Township, and so on. And if I was looking at this regionally, I would say, you know, yeah, that does add additional options and it brings a value. If I was taking a view through a regional lens, but I'm not. I take a view from, through a Plymouth Township lens, because that's who I am elected to serve. I don't really care much about what people in Northville Township have to say, to be honest, but I do care about what people in Plymouth Township have to say and the impact on them. Under criteria two, so the additional shopping benefits, I think benefit Northville Township and Salem Township residents more than us. Traffic and infrastructure, we really beat that one to death, but I really have significant concerns with this because my understanding of the plan is two curb cuts, so two ways in. If you looked at Google Earth and you look at the Meyer and Canton, there are six distinct ways in. If you look at the Meyer and Livonia, there are eight ways to get into that property. This would be two. And they'd all be in and out on Five Mile Road. So that's just a massive amount of impact on Five Mile Road. You know, I don't really believe this is in the best interest of the township residents. It's not only impacting Five Mile, but it's Ridge, Beck, Sheldon, Halyard. I go up Beck every day. I have a little route I take as part of my duties. And it's, the traffic is getting horrendous. It is getting horrendous. Go out there at, you know, 8:00 in the morning, 9:00 in the morning on Beck, it is heavy, and it's not just because of road improvements, that is daily traffic. And it's truck traffic, and you have trucks coming into this facility, you know, all the time bringing merchandise. So I also, I also, I might have a little different opinion if the infrastructure existed, but the improvements to the infrastructure are an if come. You know, let's build this thing, and then we'll improve Five Mile, and we'll put in additional traffic control, and we'll improve Ridge, but let's build this thing first. No, let's put the roads in, and then after the roads are in and the improvements are made, then we can talk about what kinds of facilities those roads will support. But right now, they will not support it. If that money never comes through from the state or from developers to widen Five Mile, we will have a bloody freaking mess on our hands, especially if there's a train, especially around holidays. It will be nuts. Several of us live within that vicinity and know what the... A couple other things I wanted to say. I wanted to just hit on that, the non-factors. One of the things that's a non-factor is that it's not our job to assess whether we need a certain kind of business or not. That's, you know, Meyer and people in their profession have really smart people that study the demographics, they study the market. They don't just put a pin on a map and say, "Let's build something here," and they believe there's a market for it, right? But, and it's not our job to say, "There's enough grocery stores around, we can't have any more grocery stores." So that does not weigh into my opinion as to how, the relevance of these criteria. The crime thing, for the last 15 years, the same people that bring the same arguments for every single development, and I am still waiting for this crime to materialize, they said the same thing about LA Fitness, they said the same thing about charter schools, they said the same thing, "It's going to increase crime, increase crime, increase crime," nonsense. But in summary, I think I hit all my points. I was, I don't think at this juncture, the benefits of having this outweigh the downside. So I'm a no, and I urge my colleagues to also join with me. Thank you.
Other comments?
Well, I think Bob's points are really good, and I have a hard time justifying it as well.
If you could please not applaud, this is our time to discuss. We weigh these decisions very heavily. I can tell you, I have not slept over several nights thinking about this. I take this decision very seriously. I have changed my mind 70 times in this evening alone, listening to you, okay? This is our time to discuss. We respect each other, we listen to each other here, and please, the applause is very distracting because we're thinking, we're on the spot here, we have a room full of people, we're thinking, we're processing, we're deciding, and applause or comments, whispering is just very distracting. So please, let us have our time.
Yes, go ahead.
I believe four of us on the planning commission here either live directly on Ridge Road or very close to it. So this is very personal for us. Two of us on the planning commission have lived 31 years in our same homes off of Ridge Road. We love Plymouth Township so much for the same reasons that all of you love Plymouth Township. I can't tell you how many times I've driven into my subdivision at night, and thank God that I have the privilege of living in Plymouth Township. My point here is that we, as a planning commission, do take this really, really seriously. And we have to apply the law here. We can't just tell Myers they can't go in because we don't like them, or we can't, you know, or some other reason. That's, we're not allowed to do that. We have to look at the law, we have to look at all the considerations, and try to make the best decision. Like Commissioner Barberino, I've changed my mind on this five or six times. In general, I believe that Meyer is probably a good thing for the community as a whole. However, until we get some certainty around the road situation, which is very much as bad as everybody says, because I experience it every day, and we all do, I just don't feel comfortable going forward with this at this point in time. That's my view.
Thank you, Commissioner George Shevitz, for all your points. And just to clarify, I wasn't trying to say that they should change and have big-box stores because of the pandemic affecting jobs, but it's something, I also serve on the Board of Directors of the Plymouth Chamber of Commerce, so it's something that we talk about all the time.
Yeah, I got it. I didn't, I didn't take it that way. If I came across that way, I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay. But I especially am looking at criteria number two, and that's the one that I'm really hung up on. And I agree that until the road situation, that has to be straightened out first, and especially with some of the other development that's coming on in that area. So I am a no on this as well. I do not think it meets all of the criteria, but especially not criteria number two.
I'm in agreement with my fellow commissioners as well.
Okay, well, if we're going to make a motion...
Dennis? Before we make a motion, is it possible that we could have our planner go through the scenarios of what a denial, approval means, and what the next steps would be?
Yes, we can do that. And I wanted just to add one more point, and, you know, adding on to Commissioner Boyd, is that we try to look at personal people's property rights. So we have to take into consideration everyone's property. Everyone is invested in this community. So we have to look at your individual property rights, like the one lady that said, you know, "Don't ruin my, you know, personal quiet use of my property," but we take that into consideration. But we also have to take into consideration the property rights of the people that own this piece of property, and their right to do certain things. They're asking for a request, and it's up to us to determine whether or not that request should be granted. So there's a, it's a very complicated jigsaw puzzle, if you will, that we have to put the pieces together, respect everyone. That's why I kept saying through this meeting, "Don't applaud, don't boo, don't do awe, don't do outbursts." You know, let us do our job. We want to hear your comments on all levels. So Ms. Hall, do you have any comments, thoughts on what you've seen and heard tonight?
John's question first about the process.
Yes, so as a special land use, the final decision rests with the planning commission. This isn't a recommendation. If it is a motion of denial, then the applicant would not be allowed to propose the same use within another year on the site. And if it is a denial or a approval, I recommend that you add findings of fact to your motion.
So I, so, and if we, I always like to use your report as part of those findings of facts. So would we be appropriate to say that we feel that the criteria have not been appropriately met for this request?
I think you would need to go a step further and specify why.
Excuse me, you know, you interrupted her. I've asked you multiple times, please don't do that. Yeah, you're just saying, but now your time to say things is over. All right? Thank you.
Swear to God, you're on worse than me.
So, because now I've kind of lost my train of thought.
Okay, so findings of fact, the commission would want to be specific, such as Commissioner Griger mentioned the criteria number two, that the road infrastructure is not there at this time to support a development of this size. You'd want to be specific. I think the applicant is requesting an opportunity to address some of those.
If I may just shortly, there are a lot of questions. Most of what we heard about tonight was traffic concerns, and obviously, the commissioners share those concerns as well. And there were some kind of open questions here, and given the, you know, the provisions of the ordinance, which denial causes prevention of raising again within a year, we would like to either withdraw our application at this time until we can get more information on the traffic issues, or more certainty regarding the road projects at issue, or potentially table it, whichever the commission would prefer. But that would be our request at this time.
I'm not in favor of tabling it this evening.
No, I'm not either. Bob, you had really specific points. Do you want to make the motion with the findings of fact?
I could, yes.
Did we really consider the tabling? Why would you want to do the tabling? I'm not necessarily supporting or denying, but just, I just have, myself have to understand why.
Personally, for me, I think we have enough in for me.
Yeah, it's not, the road situation's not going to change in the next year.
I would agree with Bob.
We're not going to see bulldozers out there tomorrow.
So you're, I want to just go back to the road thing again. So where do we stand with, you know, you got some grant money and other things. Does this have to pass through the state legislature? What's the process going on there for improving our roads?
The gentleman who spoke to that could... The gentleman who spoke to that could speak to that about the process, but if he cared to.
So where are we with that? I mean, is this just a pie in the sky, or?
No, no, no. Wait, that's it. It's appropriations.
Oh, it's in appropriations?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Part of it.
Okay, yeah. That answers it for me.
I don't think that's a priority. There's a lot of that, but I feel good about it. Otherwise, it wouldn't be out there pushing this thing.
If he could step up the volume to the floor.
I think it's fine.
Yeah, just, I can just repeat it, you know, that he thinks, you know, it has some sense of possibility with appropriations, but we're still talking a year. And really, we, you know, if we did deny today, you have a year, hopefully appropriations will come through, and you can come back. So I don't see where you're really gaining anything by having us table it for a year, where it would probably take that long for it to go through the state legislature, and the money's appropriated and the rest of it. I don't, I don't see what it buys, buys you.
Well, I think, I think a lot of the commentary was about the traffic study, and we could supplement that information. And it's not just the road widening project, but it's, I guess, a more comprehensive discussion of the traffic study that was performed and reviewed by the engineer. But if the commission's not interested in that, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think I'm interested.
As the applicant, we would respectfully request that our application be withdrawn. I think the, I think some of the things that were brought up tonight about the road, about the traffic study, the blending of the traffic study, funding and appropriations, grant money for design, we're also doing some things ourselves, you know, to see if we can speed up some processes with, in conjunction with our build schedule and our plan for the, for the store. I mentioned earlier, it wasn't planned until 2025, and we were thinking that we'd have an answer on the, you know, that this would, but perhaps, in a best-case scenario, be subject to road improvements, and subject to the improvements called out in the traffic study, which are, is more commonly that we see in other communities, that you have to fill engineering stormwater, and road improvements, and meet Wayne County roadway approvals, you know, those are kind of conditions we usually see put on, put on projects as large as ours. I'd respectfully like to request a withdrawal of this application.
Well, I don't think, Laura, do we have anything to say if they decide?
And I would say it's not up to the audience. You know, I keep hearing, you know, the audience murmur and try to tell the board what to do. And I think that's really unfair. And I think throughout this evening, our team has been silent, been respectful, been courteous, been professional, listened to their comments, addressed their comments in a civil manner, and I think the audience has not addressed themselves in a, in a similar manner, and nor have they given respect to the applicant. And I think that's, that's very unfortunate.
Yes, I agree.
It is.
I agree.
The attorney over here keeps waving a two-page letter, and it's a response to the traffic study, but yet he was never corrected. He keeps calling a two-page letter our traffic study, which is absurd. And it only sensationalizes the audience. That's his point.
Well, and I think we tried to be certainly respectful to everyone. We respect what people have to say.
This gentleman continues to interrupt from the start of the meeting till just now. He continually interrupted the process. I don't think we've had a duly fair process, and we'd like to withdraw the, draw the matter.
I'd like to address that.
No, you can't. So Laura, what is, what would be the process if they were to withdraw it?
That process is not outlined in the zoning ordinance, but they'd be withdrawing their application on record, we'd close the file, they would have to resubmit under a brand-new application, new forms, new public hearing, new fees. The process would essentially start from scratch again.
Laura, there wouldn't be a, a time period where they'd have to wait?
No, they could do it tomorrow.
They could do it tomorrow.
Yes, yes, the clock essentially restarts. It's a brand-new application.
Thank you for clarifying that.
But you've heard the objections from the people, particularly with traffic. And I agree, the traffic is a stumbling block. So unless there's some significant changes, either with that area, you know, some real strong assurance that roadways will be improved, and other issues that the public has mentioned, you're probably going to come back with the same result.
And also, I would, no, I'd like to speak, please.
I'm the developer of the site.
Yeah.
I'm the CEO of Red.
Yeah.
So, so not everything that was said tonight was factual, and I, and I didn't say anything. But we were the developer of the site at the northwest corner of Five and Back. If you check the facts, that site was, the Meyer deal was approved. It was in fact approved. What we did is we sold the land, we sold the land to M.I. Homes, and in exchange for an additional 100 home sites, we retracted the Meyer transaction. And so it was approved on September 15th, 2016. The other thing I'll say is we've been working on this since 2017. We've been encouraged to come to this township. I not only developed in Northville Township, on both corners, we developed the, the project on the northwest corner, we developed the project on the northeast corner, Northville. Twenty, gosh, more than that, 40 years ago, I was the capital behind DeMadia, that developed Plymouth Township. I've been engaged in this community for many, many years, many years, in every aspect. We're looking at additional land, we're looking at additional opportunities here. We are a solid developer, 55 years doing mixed-use developments, such as this. If you want a track record, I can speak to it, but I don't think I need to. We're respectfully asking that you allow us to withdraw this until we have an opportunity to address the issues that have been put forth today. Not all of these items are factual. And by the way, you know, Gary Roberts did a nice job of speaking to what the MITC is up to, okay? We wouldn't have invested millions of dollars in the development of the site, at the request, by the way, of Wayne County Plymouth Township. And we wouldn't have invested if we felt like we were going to be turned down tonight, and we weren't going to give, be given fair opportunity. So I'd ask you, please, please, consider my request, consider the request of Meyer. It's reasonable. You can say no on another occasion. The facts were put out there, and it was a smear campaign, okay? And by the way, I'll speak to this because I know this, this for fact. The gentleman sitting here, the attorney, is the attorney for the gas station owner, the convenience store, and they fought us just as hard when we went to Northville, just as hard. I was there. Okay? And they, and they did the same exact thing, and they put out information that was not accurate. Okay? And then what they did is that they raised an ire, and that's what happened here tonight. Okay? And this, this, with all due respect, you're listening to us, you're listening to the community, but with all due respect, I ask you to allow us to withdraw this.
I would like an opportunity to respond.
No.
No, you are, sir, you had your opportunity, and you are engaged. Tell me that you're not employed.
No, no.
And you too, sir, who are you employed by?
Okay, we're not. You know, this does not help your case.
That's unfair. That's unfair.
Please, I would like to address the applicant, though. When you do look at resubmitting in the future, please take careful note of the comments made by trustee Dorshavitz, excuse me, treasurer Dorshavitz. It's not just traffic, okay?
We, we understand that.
We do look at our ordinance, so it's not just traffic that we're concerned about. Please listen, go back to the video, and take very careful, you know, notes on what...
I, I heard every, every word that was spoken tonight.
And I have, you know, attorney, and teammates, and engineer, and all here, and partners
in the project, that were all listening to the comments. I think we just, we just keep talking about traffic because it seemed to be like the overarching theme, but I certainly know there were other equally employer themes.
It's not the overarching theme for the commission. We look at a lot of other things.
Well, what I heard, what I heard the, the planning commissioner on the end say, if the road was constructed today, if the road improvements were available, if the road improvements were there, then his decision would be maybe differently. I certainly can't speak for him.
I don't know, that's very speculative, and for the record, Redeco is a great company. You got, you, you do good work, and we're very grateful. Meyer is a wonderful organization. I have nothing, nothing bad to say about it. This is, we live in the area.
We understand.
We live here, and we live, and, you know, this is...
We've been a corporate citizen of this area since 1985.
I, I understand that, and I've been a resident of this area, and a representative of the people of this area, and it's, it's bad. You know, you're talking about an if come on a road.
So you're, so again, it's, he's saying traffic is bad.
Well, traffic is, yeah, of course it is.
But there's ways to improve traffic. There's, there's, traffic is bad, a lot of places.
We've talked a lot about traffic.
The alternative uses for the site are very likely distribution. That's the interest that we're getting. And if you think that 3,500 cars a day would be, would be an issue, think about what a distribution facility on 60 acres might do to the same location. I mean, we are very well aware of, of traffic constraints here. As I said, I've been developing here for 40 years.
Yeah, the, the, kind of the issue, and this is not your issue, this is a broader issue, is that it's cumulative. So the traffic in and of itself, if Meyer were the only, you know, the only, you know, entity in that, in that area, that in and of itself would not be problematic, but it becomes cumulative. And that's where, you know, I mean, I think people, I, I was given a headache when people wouldn't stop talking about traffic study. But, but it, it's a cumulative effect, and those roads cannot support, there's two entrances, there's two curb cuts. If you go to your store in Canton, there's six ways to get into that store, or if you go to your store out in Livonia, there's eight ways. Go look on Google Earth, I could show them to you.
But this, this is something we deal with in every community that we're developing in. I mean, we just, we just developed 160-acre site in Bloomfield Township, and, and it was a defunct development, and we developed it with a mixed-use development that has, you know, has a Menards and an Aldi's and a hotel, and, and we did the same thing. I mean, we know this location well, and we know, you know, and we wouldn't be considering this if we didn't take all this into consideration. So, so what I'm, what I'm asking you is just, please allow us a time to address your concerns here, because, because I don't think that, that, that we've had that opportunity, okay? Because what's happened is, we do have a traffic study, the MITC has a traffic study, and, and we know this location well, and I think I can address the issues that you have. But give me time to do that. And I'm just asking that we, we are permitted to withdraw the application. You can take this up any other time, really.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing from you is that, I, I'm hoping I'm hearing this from you, that you've listened to the people, you've heard what their objections are, what their concerns are, and you will prepare a better presentation that addresses the issues that were raised today by our citizenry.
100%, sir. And I, and what I want to do is I want to address actually the use of the site to a greater degree, and I'm happy to share that the next time we meet. And I'm telling you that, you know, we are invested in this community, and we're as concerned as anyone in this room is with traffic. We have, we have additional land to develop, we don't plan to stop here, we are, we are, we've identified other locations, and by the way, it's, it's what we do. I've done this for 40 years. I've never been in front of a, in front of a community where we haven't had the opportunity to withdraw an application based on what we heard in the evening. There's no reason in the world why you wouldn't permit that of us right now, sir.
Don't look at me.
Well, I seen if you have any more comments.
No.
You've had some good ones.
I've, I've exhausted my good ones.
So Laura, they're allowed to just, to withdraw?
So do we need a motion for that, or they just do it?
Just do it.
Maybe to accept their, the withdrawal of their application, just for the record, so it's clear.
Right, so there's no confusion. So you have the facts and all the discussion points in front of you, so what do you want to do?
I, I think, are you asking the commission?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should rule on it. You know, it's only a year, and they can reapply, but I, I think not ruling on it just kicks us down the road, and so we come back in three months, the roads are still the roads, and the money is still not there. It's not there.
Okay.
But roads are not a reason to deny this, based on my knowledge of...
Criteria number two. Public health and safety and welfare.
Part of this is, it's, this is a, a much more holistic issue. It's not just Myers alone. It's all of the development that's going on in Five Mile Ridge area, the cumulative effect over time. We already know today, the roads don't work there. Last week, you know, at 6:00 at night, traffic was backed up all the way to the top of the hill there, which is...
I understand, we deal with that. We can address it.
So we, we need to, we, or at least I need to know that there is a definitive plan that's approved and funded and scheduled to improve those roads before I can think favorably about any other additional action.
And that's what I'm asking for, is the opportunity to address that, please.
I, I don't respectfully believe, and I want to say, Mr. Roberts, we appreciate everything you're doing on, on trying to help the roads and working in Lansing, and I know that's a godless task, and we thank you for it, and please, keep doing it, okay? We will see success eventually, but until, I don't see that realistically happening within the next 12 months. I hope, I hope I'm proven wrong, but for that reason, I'm, I'm, Bob, I'm kind of in your view, let's just say no tonight, and invite them to come back in a year from now, and hopefully we'll have a definitive answer on the roads, which would, it's not the only answer, it's not the only issue, but to me, it's the biggest stumbling block.
I, I think out of respect for the process that we've all gone through tonight, we owe it to the citizens, and to ourselves as planners, and to Plymouth Township, to rule one way or the other and not withdraw. I think that, that would almost be disrespectful of, of the process that every, that we've all gone through tonight, including the applicant. I would include the applicant in that.
So who's going to make this motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, we're talking, it'd be a roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny application 2484 for the Meyer Grocery Store and Gas Station Special Land Use on the basis of the planning commission's finding that is not consistent with criteria number two because of the lack of improvements to Five Mile and, and north-southbound roads. It is not in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare. Additionally, criteria number one, it's not the intent of the MITC, and I'll stop there.
Is there support?
Support.
So a yes vote would mean...
Denial.
Denial. Okay. Denial. Okay, this would be sure everybody is.
Okay, is everybody clear on that? All right. So Chairman Sobolski?
I vote no.
Commissioner Barberina?
I vote yes. Yes, we mean deny.
Commissioner Greger, I vote yes. Trustee Dorshavitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry is excused. Commissioner Itzler?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's one, two, three, four, five to one.
So it's one, two, three, five to one. Pass, is it?
Pass, is it?
Motion pass it.
Motion pass it.
Yeah, that's good, you get to say that. Yeah, that's good, you get to say that.
Motion pass. Yeah, motion pass. Okay, so. Okay, so.
With another application? With another application?
Yeah, where's the other application? Yeah, where's the other application?
We have another, we have another item on the agenda. We have another, we have another item on the agenda. Oh, you're welcome. Oh, you're welcome.
Are they here? Are they here?
Can we take a recess, a little rest? Can we take a recess, a little rest?
A five-minute recess. A five-minute recess.
Which is 41336 Concept Drive. Which is 41336 Concept Drive. And some of the commission members will be familiar with this parcel because there was a proposed site plan, almost identical to the proposed site plan before you back in 2001, which has lapsed. So this is very similar to the development on Lot 14 that we talked about last month. The applicant is proposing a, just under 27,000 square foot building with a kind of a corner office space and then 19,000 square feet of warehouse space. It is there at the corner of Hagerty Road and Concept Drive, so it's a corner lot and it has more of a presence on the corridor, so that makes the facade particularly important. This is a permitted land use as a spec building for office and warehouse. There's no special land use requested at this time, no rezoning. They meet all the dimensional standards. In terms of the trees on site, two-thirds of the trees will be removed to accommodate the building footprint and parking lot. The applicant is replacing them as required. There's no regulated heritage trees on site that need replacement. We don't have any concerns regarding the vehicular access and circulation, nor does the fire department. Regarding the pedestrian access, again, since this is on a corner lot, there's an existing sidewalk on Hagerty Road, which will remain. The applicant is just proposing to do payment in lieu for the sidewalk on Concept Drive, which we support. That sidewalk would not go anywhere. In terms of landscaping, on page four of our report, there's a couple of recommendations for some additional vegetation on the site, which we feel like could be handled in the final site plan application. Parking, based on the square footage of the building alone, they are deficient to parking spaces, but since the majority of the building is warehouse space, we find that with modern, more modern parking calculations, that they do have enough parking with the 59 spaces that they're proposing. And we note that there's some additional space on their site that they could dedicate as banked parking for those two spaces that they're missing, should those need to be constructed in the future. We don't see them needing to get a variance for this, so that would be one condition of approval, is that they have the two banked parking spaces on their site. On page six, we discuss the building design and architecture. As I mentioned, the corner building with the frontage on Hagerty, that facade is particularly important. We are discouraging painted CMU and requesting that more of a natural furnished block or brick be incorporated. I think the applicant has some material samples for you tonight to take a look at, but these items would need to be addressed for the final site plan. And the lighting complies. So there's just a couple items to still address, including the landscaping and the facade and the, the banked parking to show on the site plan. So we feel like this, this application is more than ready for tentative site plan approval And since the applicant has to address the Lot 14 items, to just come back at the same time with Lot 1 and 14, with the final site plans for both those, so recommending tentative this evening. And I believe the engineer's report only has a couple outstanding items and then most of it is all, all the additional permits that are necessary. And they don't have any objection.
Fire Department.
That's it. The applicant's received, no deficiencies in, from the fire department, from a public safety perspective, and the applicant has just handed out building material samples. Can, can you come up to the podium because we are recording? So what are your thoughts? You see, the one recommendation I'm focusing on is that Ms. Howes recommended that the commission provide direction to the applicant regarding the building design, especially as all building elevations are greater than 100 feet in length and that the building fronts onto two public right-of-ways. One recommendation is to bring the building closer in compliance with the ordinance minimums to incorporate it instead of the painted split face. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that we can address that with our architect. I don't know if there's anything in, in particular in terms of colors that the commission would like to see, but it's certainly something that we can discuss with our architect, the feedback you've provided, and I'm sure he's more than capable of addressing a more artistic facade, since it, since it does front on Hagerty Road.
What did the commission think about the colors of the building materials that was just passed around? Oh, the mic wasn't there.
We're all getting punchy.
I, I mean, I like the building materials and I thought the colors were appropriate, complementary with each other. Maybe something to talk to the architect about that corner, you know, the corner with the right-of-way traffic.
Are you just looking for more articulation on the building or I guess we're, just so we can make sure we're conveying it?
So much not, as much flatness, I would say, some visual interest that it can be accomplished, I think, without too much additional expense, you know, pushing part of it in and out or... Did you have any specific thoughts you wanted to see, Laura, on that building design?
Like, the width, is it a facade?
Yeah, yeah. Especially on that corner, you know, the right-of-ways, the front on the right-of-ways.
Yeah, the, the west elevation along Hagerty and kind of that front southwest corner, that you would really see either going, if you're going north on Hagerty Road or coming around Concept Drive.
Some additional visual interest, I think, that there's just some shadow lines or, you can move it up to the architect, see what he or she can come up with. Any other comments? Oh, did you have something?
No, I was just gonna say, yes, we can definitely address that with the architect.
Anything else from anyone? I think we've covered them. So, all right, well, are we ready for a, a motion?
Yes.
The tentative site plan approval?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant tentative site plan approval to PC application number 2479, the Lot 1 Concept Drive Site Plan, subject to the items in the McKenna Report and the engineering report.
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Boyd to grant tentative site plan approval, subject to set conditions for application 2479. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We appreciate your patience, too bad you drew the short straw.
Thank you.
That's the way it goes.
Thank you for not making any public comment.
Thank you.
I thought somebody would stick around and have, you know, say something about your point. All right, thank you. You too.
Dennis, I have one quick thing.
Sure.
I did not read the summary of the emails received about, into the record, so can I do, can I do that now?
Well, the public hearing's closed, but we can amend.
Let sleeping dogs lie.
Can we attach it to the minutes?
Attach it to the minutes? Is that the way to do it? Okay. I'll make sure that when.
I think it's more of a courtesy anyway. I don't think it's a requirement to do it.
Yeah, unless there was something that was different.
No. There was one person in favor of it. That's different. And, and then can we table everything else?
I didn't receive the monthly planning report.
I got it.
Did you? Yeah, it wasn't, and I, yeah.
Well, I didn't get a packet, so.
Okay, yeah, I didn't get the.
Because Laura thought I was still on vacation.
Is there anything of great importance that we need to talk about right now or?
No, these items can be tabled.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we table item eight to our next meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, you, you made, you made the motion. Okay, who's support?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved in, supported to table application or item number?
All of item eight.
All of item eight. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners have any comments? Is there a motion for, for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Boyd to adjourn the planning commission meeting at 10:28 PM. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we adjourn.
Yes, Commissioner Barberino, this one was a breeze compared to some of the ones she used to describe.
Yeah, this is actually giving the number two spot.
Yeah, I think it is.
No kidding?
Yeah. Wow, maybe number three.
Now, to adjourn?
For Meyer.
For my, me?
Yeah.